Welcome, everybody, to the March 21st meeting of the Board of Selectment. And this is sort of like, I think of as License Night. So that's a major part of our activities, but not all. So the first is the acceptance of the agenda. Are there any board members, any additions, deletions? No? Then we'll carry on to announcements and turn to the Town Manager, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm probably starting to sound like a broken record now, but the 2012 Annual Town Meeting starts on Saturday, March 31st, at 8:30 a.m. at the Nantucket High School Auditorium. It will go all day until at least 5:00. Hopefully, we'll get done. We don't know yet. If we don't, we will continue on Monday, the 2nd, at 6:00. Same location. The Annual Town Election is Tuesday, April 10th, at the high school. Polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And one more announcement that came in after the agenda was posted. There is going to be some paving going on, beginning next week. And the streets that will be paved for the next few weeks are going to be Meadow Lane, Back Street, Warren Street, Upper Main Street, and New Street in Sconset. And we have this item on the next week's announcements as well.
Okay, great. And that's it for announcements, Libby?
Yes.
The next item we have is a public comment. Is there anybody here tonight who would like to address us on items not on our agenda? Mr. Cummings is here and his, we suggested he has a general comment about licenses and liquor licenses, but it's general, so we thought we'd take that under public comment rather than try and pick any specific item later on. Mr. Cummings.
Thank you. Is this microphone working?
Yes.
Okay. My name's Tim Cummings, and I'm the Drug-Free Communities Coordinator. I'm here representing Alliance for Substance Abuse Prevention. The Alliance for Substance Abuse Prevention, ASAP, of Nantucket is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. Our mission is to provide leadership, education, and support in the Nantucket community for the prevention and treatment of alcoholism, addictions, substance abuse, and related problems. We are neither endorsing nor opposing any licensure applications and are not allied with any other party on these decisions. We are simply offering further information about alcohol outlet density and its implications for environmental prevention strategies in the community. We offer this research information with the intent of providing accumulated knowledge from reputable researchers that may help to clarify some of the concerns about creating more alcohol outlets in an environment where there are already considered by many to be plentiful to serve the need. There are currently 85 alcohol licenses in Nantucket. With reference to alcohol outlet density, research on this topic done by the Prevention Research Center noted the following. When all other factors were controlled, higher initial levels of drinking and excessive drinking were observed among youth residing in zip codes with higher alcohol outlet densities. That same study reached the following conclusion. Alcohol outlet density may play a significant role in the initiation of underage drinking during early teenage, especially when youths have limited mobility. On a personal note, I have been here on Nantucket for three and a half years, working with the youth of our community on mental health and substance abuse issues. During that time, I have seen groups such as ASAP and others in our schools and community make great strides in the interest of providing a safer and healthier environment for people of all ages. As we strive to continue applying environmental strategies for the prevention of alcohol and other drug problems, we invite the entire community to join us in that effort. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. So we will keep that in mind as we go forward. Any other public comments this evening? All right. Why don't we go ahead with new business? I'm not aware of any. And we get on then with the next item of the Approval Minutes, Warrants, and Pending Contracts. And, board members, we have minutes for 9 February 2011 and 16 February 2011. So reaching back in our memory bank to see how they were. Bobby, were you?
Pre me.
Pre de Costa minutes. I just make two, I always find these helpful. Two things hit me. One, there was an item about the airport making contributions to the Surfside Road project, which has come back again. And at the moment, the airport has not been able to help out in that project. They did not get permission from the FAA or the Mass DOT. And the other one was commenting on 37 Washington Street. Libby, your first foray to the board on how to tackle that. So just sort of reminders for us. Any other corrections or comments? And we'll accept the minutes as written. The payroll warrant for the weekend in March 18. There are no objections. That will be approved. We have a Treasury warrant for 21 March. Again, that will be approved. And if there are no objections, the pending contracts, we'll turn to that. Libby, you want to review those for us?
Sure. We have some supply contracts, a service contract, and a memorandum of agreement, two of those. The first is a supply contract with DPW with Woody's Auto Supply, DBA Nantucket Auto Supply, for $24,999. This is for miscellaneous parts for the DPW fleet. The source of funding is the DPW operations budget. We have another supply contract for the Police Department with Regency Police Supply, $90,000. This is a three-year contract for police uniforms. The source of funding is the Police Department's budget. We have a service contract with, for ITGIS with a vendor called Virtual Town Hall. That's for $17,385. That's annual support and maintenance for website, software, and hosting services. The source of funding is the IT budget. And just a quick note on that. A citizen, Mr. Flanagan, has been very hopeful, providing us some different information about social media, websites, and things like that. And we are still talking to him. And he's giving us information about websites and hosting and software and things like that. And we would like to continue to explore those things with his help. In the meantime, though, we don't have the resources at the moment to not continue on with somebody hosting the website. So this is kind of a continuation contract.
I don't think we want to face a short-term issue of what we do next, but to reconsider and make sure we look at the options.
Yep.
Jason, a nice fulsome report, or something would be very helpful, so.
He's been very helpful.
Good.
Thank you, Jason.
We also have a supply contract with the Marine Department with Matikit Marine, $20,000. This, again, it says repairs, parts, fuel, slips, and tie-ups for the Marine Department, and their source of funding is the Marine budget. We also have two memorandum of agreements with the AFSMI Local 2346. That's the union that covers the Department of Public Works employees. This contract actually expired June 30th, 2011, and we have been negotiating over the last several months with the union. So what we have here is a retroactive agreement going to cover the first year, which started July 1, 2011. And that's a 2% lump sum payment. And then we have a two-year contract, which involves an entirely new wage scale, which is effective for employees hired after July 1, 2012. It also contains various other language changes. And that's a 2.5% across-the-board increase per year for fiscal '13 and fiscal '14. The board ratified this already in a prior executive session, so this is your open-session vote. And this will be able to, pending a positive Finance Committee motion or vote at town meeting, be able to go forward to this year's town meeting.
Right. And how's it work on that? The first year of the contract has to go to town meeting for the amount?
Correct.
Or in this case, maybe the prior year and the first year? But I'm not sure which there.
Yeah, they.
They both come?
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe we might break this into two sections. Are there any questions from the board on the first, everything up to the contracts? I just, two observations. There are two Nantucket contractors there again. If I hear it right, Woody's and Matikit Marine. So again, in terms of bi-local, so to speak, that's always nice to see. So if there are no objections to those, then we'll have those approved. And we might act separately on the memorandum for the union negotiations. I'd just make one comment. As Libby pointed out, there's a new scale involved for new employees. That's a significant change. And I think it's, we want to work together with our staff to help implement these changes. And we need to be aware of that as we go forward with this, so. Is there, if there's a motion then to approve the agreement here?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So that takes care of the contract section for tonight. Thank you, Libby. And moving on to the next item, we have the Town Manager's Report. And we have an update tonight on the, from the biennial update regarding government accounting standards. Libby, do you want to introduce this GASB report?
Sure. The biennial update was due to occur earlier this, earlier in 2011. And at the time, the board asked that, at some point, that our consultant come in and review what GASB 45 is and review the report. So he is here, Mr. Rhodes, and he has a few minutes to go over with you. I don't think you have a PowerPoint, correct?
We do have the report on.
We do have the full report. I think we all got all 57 pages by email. Thank you. Danny, take the mic. Just to remind us all, this is essentially about post-retirement health benefits.
Yes.
It's an important activity. The town is now essentially on a pay-as-you-go basis. But we do have to report in our financial statements, if I have it correct, the present value of what we estimate those obligations are in the future. So turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just a little background. My name's Daniel Rhodes. I'm a consulting, actually, with the actuary with the Siegel Company. Siegel is a national benefits consulting and actuarial firm. I'm out of our Boston office. We do a lot of actuarial work in the Commonwealth, both with retirement systems as well as these OPEB valuations. We are the longtime actuary for the Barnstable County Retirement System. And for the last several years, we've done these OPEB valuations for units of Barnstable County that are also part of the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group. This past valuation, which was done as of July 1, 2010, we also, we've included some other units in the past. We also included, for this one, the first time, the Town of Nantucket. It's a little different because you have your own health plan versus participating in this larger group. But we did do your evaluation and included the results in the larger report. So I'm going to spend a few minutes just talking about the background of what is GASB 45, what is OPEB. I know you've had a couple of valuations done before, so it may be familiar to some of you, but I think maybe a good refresh would be good. And then we'll jump into our report and talk about a few of the numbers and the valuation results and how that affects your financial statements. So GASB Statement 45, it's been around for a few years now. It was first effective for most communities in fiscal year 2009. And it concerns what they call OPEB. And OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. And by other, they mean other than pension. So anything provided to retirees that's not related to their pension benefit, primarily health insurance. It can also include life insurance, dental coverage, other ancillary benefits, but mainly we're talking about health insurance. And the policy for, you know, municipalities around the country, to a different extent, is, you know, people work for a municipality for several years, maybe their whole career, and often their promised benefits, medical benefits, that they had when they were an active employee, and it continues for some time. And in the Commonwealth, it's really for life after someone retires. And this is, you know, certainly a common situation around the country. And so GASB said, well, this is a very large liability. It's, for the most part, unfunded. And a lot of people are unaware of the size of this liability. So the GASB introduced these accounting standards to force municipalities to start recognizing this liability earlier on. And their view is that a retiring medical benefit, similar to a pension benefit, it's really a type of deferred compensation. It's something given to employees while they work, but they receive, you know, they earn it while they're working, but they get it after their, after their career's done. And so from an accounting perspective, the GASB said, rather than waiting till someone retires and having this liability show up out of the blue, municipalities really need to start accounting for this over an employee's lifetime, working career. And then, once they retire, that benefit, the liability for that benefit's fully accrued. And this has been the case for pensions for quite some time, but it's never, until GASB 45 was introduced, it was never, they never had these standards for benefits other than pensions. And part of the problem is the idea of what a retiring medical benefit costs is a little more ambiguous. You know what a pension benefit's going to be. It's based on someone's salary, how long they've worked, you know, what percentages they've contributed. There's a mathematical formula that determines it. For a medical benefit, it's less well-defined. The cost of it's the cost of the insurance in a given year. And for some people, it could be very low. For some people with high medical expenses, it could be very high. And it varies from year to year. I think everyone probably knows how medical inflation's been very high and very erratic over the past few years. So it's very difficult to figure out, well, what's that benefit going to cost for the next couple of years? You know, forget about for the next 30 years or the time horizons that we're talking about. So they set up ways to calculate what the value of this benefit is. And then, once you know what that is, you do the calculations similarly to what you would do for a retirement system. You project the benefits out for all of your employees, all of your retirees, over the next 30, 50, 80 years, however long people will live. Figure out how much that's going to cost every year, what that stream of benefits is, and then calculate a present value of that. And then, that present value has to be recognized over time. So you have an unfunded liability for people that have already worked. You have to start amortizing that, recognizing it over a certain period of time, and accounting for it over their careers. So if we jump to the report, maybe if we actually go back a little bit, a couple pages, and I might be able to, right there. So when we talk about what does it mean to account for this benefit, we look at three different kind of slices of it. You have people that have, say, already retired or very close to retired. Their benefit's been fully accrued. They've already put in their service. They're entitled to this benefit. So this liability's been around for a long time, but it's never been accounted for. So we call that the actuarial accrued liability. So everything that's attributable to past service, we put in that bottom slice of the pie here. Then there's what's earned in a current year. So if someone's working right now, and the way you do the calculations, roughly speaking, if someone is projected to have a 30-year career, say, with the town, they would earn 1/30 of their benefit every year. So the piece that they earn, that 1/30th in a year, is called the normal cost. That's kind of your current funding amount. That's similar to what you see on the retirement system. Those also have normal costs. And then there's the stuff that'll be earned in the future that you deal with in future accounting periods. So the way GASB says you have to account for this, say, you calculate the present value of all these benefits. You calculate it on an actuarial accrued basis, so it's based on how long they've worked and how long they're expected to work in the future. And then the expense for a given year, they call the ARC. That's known as the annual required contribution. And that consists of two pieces. The normal cost, which is the piece I mentioned earlier, that's earned in a given year, not what you're paying for retirees, but what active employees are earning right now. And then an amortization payment on that unfunded liability. So you have liability for all of your current employees and retirees. You have to start paying that off, like a mortgage. And GASB says you can take up to 30 years to amortize that, and they spell out the different ways you can do it. But essentially, it's those two pieces put together that become your ARC. And the ARC is the expense every year that gets reported in the footnotes to your financial statements. Now, it's called the required contribution, but it's a bit of a misnomer because there's certainly no requirement to fund it. It's not like a pension benefit in Massachusetts where, you know, you do have to make payments to retirement systems every year. There's currently no obligation to fund that. But if you don't fund it, then to the extent that you're not funding it in a given year, it starts to build up on your financial statements under what we call the net OPEB obligation. So that's, you know, every year, you have this ARC, this expense. And if you're not funding it, then that net OPEB obligation grows and grows as you've got this unrecognized, unfunded liability. So if we jump to, if we jump to what we call Page 1 of the department results in the report. So the way the, the way we structured this report is we had one master report that had all the units in Barnstable County. And then every individual town got their own, six pages here that had their actual financial results. So I'm going to, I'm going to walk through this a little bit. We have two columns of numbers. The, and I'll say one thing about the discount rate that I, you know, I mentioned earlier. To calculate a present value, you have to select a discount rate. And the higher the discount rate you use, the lower the present value. So GASB actually has quite a bit to say about how do you pick a discount rate? And they say the discount rate you use has to be related to the assets that will be used to pay these benefits when they come due. So what does that mean? Well, compared to, say, a retirement system like the Barnstable County Retirement, you're contributing money to that every year, all the other units are. That money's invested. It gets a fairly high rate of return, you know, 8%, 8 and 1/4, I think, is what it is currently. It may have come down a little bit. So those are the assets that are going to pay for these benefits, and they have a, you know, they're actively managed. They're going to get this higher return. So GASB says, well, you can use that assumed interest rate to discount your liabilities and calculate your unfunded accrued liability. If you're not funding benefits, which is typically what's happening on the OPEB side because there is no, there is no entity like the retirement system to fund OPEB for most people yet, although some towns are establishing them, then you have to use what's called the pay-as-you-go interest rate. And that's really related to the, you know, the general assets of the town, and however those benefits are getting paid now on this pay-as-you-go basis. So we use two different discount rates. The 8 and 1/4 on the left, that's really an illustration. So that would be if you were funding, if you'd set up an OPEB trust and were fully funding it every year and paying these benefits out through that as they came due, you could use this higher discount rate. But for now, this is all just an illustration because that's not, you know, the current regime. Really, what you're looking at is the numbers on the right, which are quite a bit higher. We did use a 5% discount rate here. It's a little higher than what the prior actuary used, and it is a little higher than what we're seeing now in a lot of, a lot of communities. And we're seeing a lot of them bring that down a little bit. It might seem crazy to think that you're getting a 5% return on any assets right now, but it is meant to be a long-term view of these returns. And we are in sort of an environment of historically low interest rates. But we're talking a 50-year time horizon, like I said, so you don't want to use something too small. So for the most part, auditors have been fine with things in the 4% and 5% range. So to go through the actual numbers, the first calculation is calculating that present value of benefits, what we call the actuarial accrued liability. And we split it up into two, to two pieces. We look at your current retirees, so people that have, you know, already finished their service, they're getting benefits right now. And then, your current active employees. And for them, this liability represents a portion. So for each employee, we look at how long they've worked and how long they're expected to continue working. So someone who just was hired yesterday is going to have no liability. Someone who can retire tomorrow will have their full liability accrued under this calculation. So that's why we split it up between the two, the two categories. And you'll see on the pay-as-you-go, the 5% discount rate, the numbers for the two, you know, your total numbers for the two categories, it's about $82 million. And so that would be the amount, if you set aside today and you've earned 5% and paid out benefits for the next 50, 60 years, what you'd have to, what you'd have to set aside right now. If you could invest the money in, say, a retirement system or some kind of portfolio that got a higher return and you got an 8 and 1/2% interest rate, that number would be much lower. It would be $51.6 million, as we calculated it. The next line there, actuarial value of assets, because there is no OPEB trust set up with money in it at this point, there are no assets to offset that unfunded liability, so the entire accrued liability at this point is unfunded. So you're, and again, it's really the columns on the right that are the current regime here, so we'll focus on those. It's about $82 million. The bottom half of this exhibit calculates that ARC, what's the accounting expense for the year. And like I said, we calculate in two pieces. There's the normal cost, which is the piece that's earned by your active employees for the year. And this is all for fiscal 2011 because we did this as of, in 2010. That normal cost is about $2.6 million on the pay-as-you-go basis. And again, much higher there than on the pre-funded basis. And then when you include some timely adjustments, it's about $2.7 million. The second piece of that ARC is the amortization payment on the unfunded liability. GASB says you can use a maximum of 30 years, so for the most part, everyone's using 30 years. You know, the longer the time you have to pay it off, the lower it can be. They actually allow you to do what they call an increasing amortization. So unlike a, what you think of as a typical mortgage where you're paying level amounts every month, you can actually start at a lower amount, have it increase every year as the town's overall payroll, so it stays constant as a percentage of payroll, so the initial payments will be lower, but then they'll be higher in the future. So again, for the most part, almost every municipality is choosing these increasing payments to get that ARC as low as possible for the first year. And that amortization payment, again, is about $3 million, once you do the timing adjustments. So your total ARC for fiscal '11, and this went into your town's financial statements, was about $5.6, $5.7 million. The, if you were, again, if you were funding in an OPEB trust, the number would only be about $4.1 million. And the final line here, just as a point of comparison, since you're not funding these benefits and you're just paying for them as they come due, as people retire, this pay-as-you-go number, the current benefit payments, we estimate that to be about $2.2 million in fiscal '11. So the key here is if you were going to set up a trust and start putting money into it to be considered fully funded, you'd have to put in the difference between the $4.1 million ARC and the $2.2 million in benefit payments. So another $1.9 million. And that's an annual number.
And that's because we're already paying the 2-2, in effect, through the health insurance trust. Do I have that right?
Exactly. That's right, yeah. You know, if you had, you know, if you had an OPEB trust set up that was paying the benefits like you have in the retirement system, you would think about as putting in $4.1 million, but that trust would be paying out $2.2 million at the same time. So the net number is what you'd have to put in. Yeah. Any questions on that before we go into the next page? We have a couple more to.
Maybe just one question. It seems to me the, it's sort of the difference between the two rates. It's about, what, $1,005,000 to go from the 8 and 1/2 discount down to the 5%?
Right.
And how many towns are actually funding these? In Massachusetts, are many?
There are very few that are fully funding. Of our client list, which is probably close to 100 municipalities, I can think of two that are fully funding. What a lot of them are doing, though, is taking the first steps, which is setting up the OPEB trust, which I know you've done, and starting to allocate small amounts of money to it. You know, in some instances, it could be $10,000 on an ARC of something of this magnitude. So it's a very small piece, but it is starting to go in. It's starting to get on the budgets, so people are starting to get used to this as something we have to start budgeting for. So if we go to the second page, we take these numbers, and this is the, we call this a funding schedule, so we're looking at that 8 and 1/4, that first column of numbers, and we project out how it's going to look for the next 30 years. This is very similar to what we do on the retirement boards, where you have, you know, you have to have these funding schedules and be fully funded by whatever, 2040 or whatever it is now. We look at the 30-year time horizon for your OPEB benefits and see what would it take to be fully funded over that 30-year period, that 30-year amortization period. So the first column of numbers, your projected benefit payments, that's the same number we saw earlier, $2.2 million. That goes up every year as more people retire, as more people live longer. And the big driver is health insurance keeps increasing, 5%, 6%, 10% a year. We have a standard assumption for how healthcare costs are going to increase. You know, some years you'll have a better year and have maybe low increases, some you might have a bad year and have higher. But again, we're looking at a very long-term picture here. So you'll see that number goes from two, you know, under $3 million to over $12 million over 30 years. And then we look at the pieces of that ARC, what you'd have to fund in a given year, the normal cost and the amortization payment. So the normal cost goes up again as more people start working and start earning benefits. The amortization payments are calculated to increase at, in this case, it's 4 and 1/2% a year, which is the overall payroll growth assumption. So your total ARC, which is your total funding requirement in column 5, you'll see the $4.1 million from the prior page. You'll see that increases to something around, looks like around $15 million by the end of the 30 years. The additional funding would be what you'd have to put in an OPEB trust every year to be considered fully funding if you're getting that 8 and 1/4 return. And, you know, like we saw on the first page, it's around $1.9 million, and it stays in that, you know, $1 and 1/2 to $2 and 1/2 million over the next 30 years. So that would be, thinking of those numbers on that order of magnitude, what you'd have to put in to the trust every year to be considered fully funded. And then column 7 shows how the assets grow. So the money that you put in, it grows, it gets that 8 and 1/4% return. We show how the accrued liability grows over time. That continues to grow as, again, as more people are hired and retire and get benefits. But your unfunded liability eventually goes down to zero once it's paid off over the 30 years. So this, this chart, it's, you know, it's certainly just illustration, you know, no one really knows what healthcare costs will look like in a couple of years, much less 30 years, or how many people will be working or when they'll retire, but based on our current assumptions and our best estimates, this is the, the picture that we're looking at for the next 30 years. In contrast, if we look at the next page, we show a similar schedule, but this is under the current no-funding regime, so you still see the, the same benefit payments, column two, but your normal costs and your amortization are much higher, because you're using that five percent discount rate. Your arc is, is going to be much higher, and you're not doing any additional funding, so your, your accrued liability grows, it's even higher than the other exhibit, and it's completely unfunded, because there are never any assets accumulated to offset that liability. So this is, just sort of a comparison of those two, those two columns, but on a 30-year time horizon. And then just a couple more pages after this. These are the accounting numbers that go into your financial statements, so you kind of track this year over year. What is that, what is that arc? We calculate every year. There's some accounting adjustments that get made, then you have to say, well, compared to the arc, what's your contribution in a year? And again, you can count the money you're paying now for current retirees as a contribution, but you're still looking at accumulating, in this case, it's about 3.7 million, as an increase in your net OPEB obligation, and that number grows and grows until it, you know, your full accrued liability is, has been accounted for and appears as a, as what we call the new, the net OPEB obligation. And then the last couple pages are just some summary of assumptions. This also goes into your financial statements, some of the high level, what's the valuation day, what are the discount rate, how many people are in the valuation? And I think that might, there might be one more page, a little more detail of your, of the demographic data, how many employees, average age, things like that, average service. Those are the primary numbers. The, the pages after this go into the detail of the assumptions. We talk about what data we looked at, what claims data we looked at. We looked at a couple of years of claims experience to figure out how much are you paying now in benefits, so we can use that as a starting point for how much you'll pay in the future. You know, we describe the different plans that you offer, all the various assumptions on how long people live, when they'll retire. We take those right from the Barnstable County Retirement Valuation, so there's not, you know, that work's kind of already done, but that's the documentation of our, of our results. But these, these six pages are really the key numbers. You know, these are the ones that, have your information, goes in your financial statements to kind of summarize where you are currently.
Danny, thank you. Board members, questions, comments? Whitey?
You, you assumed a four percent increase in salaries per year?
I think it's a four and a half, but it's aggregate payroll growth, so it's not just increase in salaries, but also, you know, hiring new people, all kind of flows into that.
And, can, and once you put the money in, can you take it back out?
If you put money into an OPEB trust, you can't take it out for anything besides paying retiree benefits.
Okay.
But, you know, given how kind of small the numbers are in the first few years, you know, what you're contributing in OPEB trust is roughly equal to what you're paying anyway, so if you wanted to get that money out, you could pay it out in probably a year of retiree premium.
In effect, stop putting in and pay out.
Yeah, yeah. But if you do that, then you're never accumulating that money to start paying off that unfunded liability.
Anybody else? You know, it seems to me eventually we, as a board or the community really, has to deal with whether or not we want to start putting, whether it's token or some amount in the trust as a good faith, or whether at some point we want to grapple. I think we've decided thus far, just by our actions, that we have not made a contribution, nor decided to move towards a fully funding contribution basis, so we're sort of like the majority of towns in that sense. Whitey, another question?
Yeah, what are the adverse implications? And I know you'd like to be fully funded, but if very few people are fully funded, how does this come back to nibble us?
Um, I would say, well, there's a couple things. There's the, there's, from the employees and the retirees' point of view, there is a, a sense of security. If they know that money's been allocated and can't be touched for other purposes, you know, they'll know that, you know, they're going to have those benefits in the future. You know, you're sort of limited under state law of, you can't really take them away at this point, but, you know, there's always the, you know, the possibility that on a, on a state level or on a, on a broader level, there could be cuts in retiree, retiree healthcare. So there's the, you know, just the assurance that there's money there to pay for it. The other, I think, big thing is the bond rating agencies are starting to look at this, and they're starting to, when they, when they look at a town's financial position, they're asking, well, first, you know, have you, have you looked at this? Have you done the study? And at this point, everyone's pretty much done at least one or two studies. And then what are you doing to address this? It's a, it's an unfunded liability, it's out there, there's not really a way currently to get rid of it, so are you doing something to start grappling with it? And I think there'll be, there'll become a point where the majority of towns are starting to fund, maybe not fully funding, but starting to fund, that the bond rating agencies will start looking negatively on people that haven't done anything.
Yeah, I think some, I, I don't remember the numbers, Danny, but some towns have put up, you know, $10,000 or $100,000, really a token compared to what their obligation is, but it's sort of good faith. And whether that's really helpful, who knows? Maybe it looks good on, to the optics, but the real economics, I'm not sure it makes a real difference, so. Any other questions? Well, good. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
And we'll see you again in two years.
Fantastic.
I, I think for the community, though, it's to understand that so far as a town, we are on a pay-as-you-go basis, and we're putting out a little over $2 million a year, and that's probably going to continue to increase forever, so, as we get more retirees compared to the employee base. All right, thank you. The next item then on our agenda tonight is a proposed response to an open meeting law complaint that was filed by Denise Riceborough against the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen. And I think the Planning Board passed a resolution at their last meeting supporting a letter addressed to the Attorney General that, in essence, we have reviewed the facts, do not find that there was any violation by the Town Board of Selectmen or the Planning Board. And board members have had a chance to review that document, and we're, if we're prepared, we would pass a resolution tonight supporting the document going to the AG. Libby, is that the sequence here, or help me out?
That is, yes.
Do we have to read the full resolution? We do have a proposed...
I think so, yep.
If someone would be prepared to move and read the resolution, that would be appreciated. If no one is, I am. Patty, you want to do that? I'll second it right after you. How's that?
Motion is moved that the Board of Selectmen files the complaint of Denise Riceborough dated and received on March 5, 2012, fee of no merit...
And, that, thank you. No remedal, remedial action is necessary in that. The February 24, 2012 meeting of the Board of Selectmen was properly posted with the town clerk, including a detailed item concerning the intent to hold an executive session to discuss strategy for a potential appeal of the issuance of a use permit for a home occupation at 17 Chuck Hollow Road. General Law C 30A, Section 21A 3 specifically authorizes a public body to meet in an executive session to, quote, "discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the governmental body," quote, and, I mean, parentheses in the chair, so declares, end parentheses, end quote. The vote taken to enter executive session specifically referenced the detailed information in the meeting notice, indicated that the board would not be returning to open session, and the chair stated that an open session discussion would be detrimental to the board's litigation position. Town Council at that time and since opinioned that administrative appeal is the equivalent of litigation for purposes of the open meeting law, and that an open session discussion of the merits and risks of such action would undermine the position of the boards with respect to such administrative appeal and any further related appeal brought in the Superior Court. And further, that Town Council be authorized to respond to such a complaint in a matter consistent with this vote.
That's the motion, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Further discussion or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I note that council has opined that an administrative appeal, in their opinion, rises to the level of what is considered litigation by the open meeting law. Is that, am I clear on, on that advice?
Right.
From council?
Yes.
Okay. Not, having not attended that meeting, I'm going to abstain from voting on this issue.
I understand. That probably makes good sense.
Not, not sure that I agree either, but having not been at the meeting, I'm going to abstain.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, or raise your hand. Okay, so we have four ayes and one abstention. And thank you all for that. I will say, open meeting laws are serious matters. Our board, and we hope all our committees and town boards, act according to the open meeting law. That is certainly our intention, and we hope we all meet the, sort of the, the law itself, and also the spirit of the law. So, that's sort of where we are as a board, thank you all. And next we have the Citizen Departmental Requests.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I had one more item.
Yes.
Under Town Manager's Report. I wanted to review, I did send you all, send you this via email. Earlier in 2011, the state issued a grant opportunity to all municipalities, which was called Community Innovation Challenge Grant Program, the focus of which was to incentivize and support innovative regionalization and other cost-saving initiatives that will help local governments increase cost efficiency while maintaining service delivery. We joined in with a number of other Cape towns for a regional software, regional permitting software effort, and our group was awarded a $500,000 grant. So we're very excited about that. This was posted on the Mass Municipal Association website, issued by the Department of Revenue late last week. The other towns that are, that are in with us are the Cape Cod Commission, that's not really a town, but a, an agency on the Cape, and the towns of Barnstable, Brewster, Chatham, Dennis, Eastham, Falmouth, Harwich, Mashpee, Orleans, Nantucket, Provincetown, Sandwich, Truro, Wellfleet, and Yarmouth. Of the 15 towns on the Cape, I think the only one that didn't participate was Born. So we'll be looking forward to getting some additional information. We've been contacted initially by the contact person who's based in Yarmouth for the group. So hopefully, we will get going with the permitting software effort soon, and the idea is to have a joint effort to select a vendor for software that all of the towns can use, so that each one isn't purchasing their own individual software, and we could save a substantial amount of money this way. So I just wanted to announce that.
Well, I think we mentioned this possibility a while back, and when we went through the consolidations, getting automated was an important part of that process. So we...
Yep.
Welcome the grant, and hopefully we'll get underway promptly.
Was, was there a reason why the Vineyard didn't join in?
Um, hopefully nobody from the Vineyard is here, but they don't join in. They do their own thing.
But they do, they do have their own software?
No, they just in general do their own thing.
Just in general, right. We participate with the Cape Cod Selectmen's Association and the Cape Cod Managers Association. So we are reaching out to our American brethren as a community. Right, Michael?
Absolutely.
All right. Libby, thanks for that.
Thank you.
So now we'll go back to, what's next here? The request for acceptance of a resignation of Brenda Johnson from the Council on Aging. So we usually have a motion for, to accept and to draft a letter of thank you for participation. So moved, seconded, all in favor say aye. Thank you very much. And we thank Brenda for serving. Next one, the Nantucket Island Chamber of Commerce requests for approval of a public assembly permit for daffodil tailgate picnic. There won't be any daffodils by that time. They're all up and out practically, but we hope it'll be a...
Daffodil STEM Festival.
It'll be a STEM festival.
It's going to be a cherry tree, awesome.
Well, it'll be a wonderful weekend. But we do, we have to act to approve the public assembly permit? Libby, can you update us on this?
You do, and, but more importantly, it's the waiver from the section of the town code which relates to public consumption of alcohol. And I think we have someone...
Yes, we do have a representative, Stacy Stewart. I'm on the board of the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm also on the Events Committee. So, as, as we were just discussing, it's that time of year again, but the daffodils are not going to be quite yellow, but they'll be up, so. So we're, we're running the tailgate picnic pretty much as we did last year. We've, the past few years, we've worked with the police department to make sure that it's a, a well-run event, and we again met just this morning, and things seemed to work very well last year, so we are looking to do the same for this year.
Questions or thoughts, board? It sounds like we have a specific action, Libby, we're being asked to take, and a waiver of that section of the code?
Correct. Section, chapter 54, section 1C of the Code of the Town of Nantucket.
Do you want to say what that section's about, just so there's no misunderstanding?
It's an open container bylaw which prohibits the consumption of alcohol on public property without an approval of you.
Right. So, it's something I think we all dealt with previously, and the event has gone off just fine. So, Whitey?
Yeah, is there any thought of changing the date? No, that's true.
Well, if people would make bold reservations...
Or not this year, but in the future, if we're getting warming.
Well, I think the, this year was extraordinarily warm. Please keep in mind that those that are not aware, for daffodils that are coming up, there are early bloomers, there are mid-bloomers and late-bloomers. So we will have daffodils in bloom, they just will not be the yellow variety. They're going to be more on the, the shade of a lighter pale white and pink, and as you know, Sally's quite a daffodil person, so we will have daffodils.
Good. Now I feel better.
I would sponsor a, despite a few that are not even close to the road or your...
So we'll get continuous daffodil, right through daffodil weekend.
We get to start celebrating early.
My, my sister is, is Sally.
Yes.
That's the expert in this, and so maybe I ought to talk to her.
Perfect, perfect. I move approval of the request for public assembly permit and a request for a waiver of chapter 54, 1C of the Code of the Town of Nantucket.
Great. Patty, thank you. Been moved, seconded, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Stacy, thanks.
Thank you, and I believe I'm next on the list as well.
Oh, boy. All right, so we're moving into public hearings, and when I turn the page, we have lots of public hearings. So we're gonna, we have to open these, Erica? All right, so we'll open a public hearing to consider the Nantucket Island Chamber of Commerce application for a public assembly permit for the 212 daffodil festival, antique car parade, and dog parade, to be held 28 April, from 9:00 to 1:30. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor? I think you're right here.
Thank you. Stacy Stewart, representing the Nantucket Island Chamber of Commerce, on the board and on the Events Committee, so.
Any questions for anybody else? Anybody else wish to speak? Why don't we close the public hearing and the pleasure of the board? Motion to approve, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Stacy. You got another one?
Thank you. No, I believe that's it, for today.
Well, thanks for staying, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
You got the cars, you got the dogs, we're fine.
All right. Now we'll open a public hearing to consider an application for public assembly permit for a Nantucket Wine Festival grand tasting to be held 19 and 20 May at the Nantucket Yacht Club. Is there anybody who wants to speak? Yes, sir.
Simon Shury, here for part of the management team. Dennis couldn't make it, unfortunately.
Well, we're happy to have you.
Thank you.
So, anything unusual? This is a repeat?
Same, same, same as usual, nothing's changed.
Same as usual, looks good. Anybody else wish to speak on this item tonight?
Can you just repeat your name for the...
Simon Shury.
Simon Shury. All right, any, as I say, anybody else wish to speak? Why don't we close the public hearing, and with the motion of the board, motion to approve? Second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.[1710.86]
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Simon, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we'll open a public hearing to consider petition for Nantucket Electric Company, uh, National Grid Plan 11864374 to install SHH3-1, use STD UR1, and install, I'm sort of starting to slip ahead here, 1-3 inch PVC on Indian Avenue in Nantucket. Is there anybody speaking in favor of this application to install? No? Anybody speaking against? Anybody speaking at all on the item? Erica, can you help us? Why don't we close the public hearing? Why don't we close the public hearing? Is, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
I think this is underground, so it's not a big deal, right?
It's a handheld and PVC.
It's the same question I had every one of you. Do they have to bore under the road, or do they have to cut the pavement? I'd like someone here from National Grid to answer that question for me. I don't know. I almost feel like saying, come back in a month. If you can't come this year, I'm not involved in this.
How about we, uh, how about we approve it, subject to it being
Ms. Chairman?
Cutting the road and sending a letter, just to confirm the feelings of the board. Michael?
Yeah, we, we have a memo from Kara in our packet indicating that the contractors to make sure where possible to bore under the road instead of excavating the way. Is, is where possible leaving the door open at all? I think that's a valid question.
Hopefully not. Hopefully, we're on the case, right, Kara?
Typically, at this time of year, the roads are closed. But given the late winter we have, they, they can be opened if necessary. But in these cases, we typically tell them that their first option has got to be to go under the road if possible, and open cut is a last resort. And if it is open cut, there's a whole series of, of refilling options that they have to take care of.
So, you would be involved if they have to open cut?
Yes.
And if we wanted to, Bobby, the DPW could come back to us. Now, that's one way. Or, we leave it in your good graces. We know you have the right intentions, and hopefully 99% of the time, that's what will happen.
Is this a new house? Or is this an existing system? A house that needs a new service? Would you want any of that, Kara?
That, I'm not, I, off the top of my head, I can't, I can't remember.
Well, we close the public hearing, and I have to ask the pleasure of the board.
I'll move approval based on my confidence that the staff will execute our intent here, and I feel comfortable with that, so.
So, that's a motion?
Motion to approve.
Yeah. Motion is there? Seconded. So, I think what we're saying, Kara, thank you very much, if they're going to open up, maybe let us know. Other than that, we trust your good judgment. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
No. One no. Four ayes and a no. Uh, we'll now go to item number four, and we'll open a public hearing to consider a petition for Nantucket Electric Company. Plan number, it's in the agenda, to install new handheld, number 21, near pole number two, on Copper Lane. So, again, some of the same questions probably, Bobby. Is there anybody speaking in favor of this? No? Speaking at all? No. Okay. So, it's up to the board. We'll close the public hearing and the pleasure of the board.
Same.
Same.
Same, same motion, that's subject to the good management processes of our Department of Public Works. So, that's the motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 No.
No. Four to one again, a repeat. And the next item, number five, we'll open a public hearing to consider an application for new common victor license for Nantucket Barbecue, DBA The Pit Stop. Chris Morris, manager, I think I saw Chris, there he is, manager for premises located at 12 Nobodyer Farm Road. Welcome, Chris. Are you speaking in favor?
I, I am speaking in favor, yes. Basically, just to let you know what's going on, we are taking over what, from, which is working at the Nantucket Trading Post, what used to be the Thai food. We are just taking over the kitchen, operating as the same operation, basically procedure-wise, except we're changing the concept to sort of a family-style barbecue. We'll do some fried chicken and, you know, the accompaniments with it as well, to be sold right on the premise there at the Nantucket Trading Post.
Anybody else wish to speak on the item? No? Why don't we close the public hearing? Questions from the board for Chris or comments? Michael?
Chris, is this gonna, um, will, will the configuration of the store change?
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing.
Yeah, no, no configuration change at all. It's the same
Same place where the Thai food was.
Same place, little hot box thing, yep. A little hot box thing, and, you know, no equipment changes. You know, we've, obviously, have talked to Art and all those guys, so, no changes whatsoever.
So, just, are you just doing the kitchen, or are you going to operate the store as well?
Just the kitchen. Just the kitchen, correct.
Move approval.
Move approval. Seconded. Any further discussion?
I can, I'm going to be able to smell the barbecue from my house. I don't know if I should. I'm going to have to recuse.
This is the first step, so.
You can report back to us.
All right. Well, if somebody wants to dime me out to the Ethics Commission, I'm going to vote yes.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Everybody, five. Chris, you got
Thanks very much, guys.
All right. Item number six, we'll open a public hearing to consider an application for a new common victor license for Nantucket Island DBA The Hub. Tess Anderson, manager for premise located at 31 Main Street, The Hub. Tess, welcome.
Hello. Thank you. Good evening.
What are you up to?
I am proposing to be able to sell food and beverage out of my current existing location. Light food and beverage, very simple coffee, light baked goods. I currently sell all closed container food and beverage, but I'm looking to expand a little bit on that, since I am one of the very few year-round local businesses that's open downtown, and definitely seems like there's a need for that in our downtown community.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on the matter? Why don't we close the public hearing? Questions or comments from the board for Tess while she's here? Michael?
I understand from Tom Glenn, who has lived on the island for 85 or 90 years now, that there was a lunch counter in
Yeah.
At one point, right?
There was. It was Rogers back in the 50s. Whitey, you might remember that? I don't know. I'm sorry.
No.
No. I'm sorry, but it
No, no. No.
No, I did that at the Jetty's.
Oh. It was back in the 50s. The original Soda Fountain mirror is actually behind the wall, so it is still hung there. And it was Soda Fountain. Ice cream sandwiches, coffee, similar. So, it's kind of bringing it back.
You got the papers?
Oh, yeah, the papers were back, back behind that, that door to the outside.
Oh, they were? Okay.
You pick up the, the New York Times, they had it, had it there for you.
Oh, very good.
Yeah.
Those back when you made more than a dime on a paper, probably. No, it probably only cost a dime then.
So, do people reserve the Sunday Times at your premises?
Yeah.
Oh, they do. Oh, yeah.
Any other questions?
Move approval.
Move approval. Seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right. Let's see. Moving on from The Hub, we will open a public hearing to consider an application for a new entertainment license for Roco LLC DBA Paza Marco Quelo, manager, premises located at 130 Pleasant Street, Nantucket. Surprise.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Kevin Dale. I represent the applicant for this entertainment license, Roco LLC, doing business as Pozzo's Restaurant, which, as most of you know, is managed by Marco Quelo. It's located at 130 Pleasant Street. It used to be Sfolias.
Excuse me, Kevin. Can I interrupt for a second, Mr. Chairman? I'm going to recuse on this.
You're going to recuse? All right. We're down one. Only takes two to force a tide. Kevin, you're in trouble here.
Mr. Quelo would like the board to allow him to have a modest live music ensemble, guitar, keyboard, and horn, vocalist, or DJ, and also recorded CD music or streamed music and televisions in the premises from the hours of 11:30 a.m. until 1:00, just as the neighboring establishments like the Bamboo Supper Club and the Chicken Box all have such entertainment. Obviously, he will work the entertainment around the dining in the restaurant. But, as you know, Mr. Quelo has a certain flair and runs a good operation, and has been successful both at Lola 41 and at Pozzo, and I'd ask your, uh, ask your help in giving him this entertainment license.
Okay. Anybody else would like to speak on this item? If not, why don't we close the public hearing and the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Move approval. We've moved, we're seconded.
I'll second.
Seconded. Any further discussion before we move to a vote on this one? All in favor say aye.
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 Thanks very much.
Good. Compared to the Chicken Box and the Bamboo, I mean, how could we say no, Kevin? All right. Next item, we'll open
Tape change.
Tape change. Oh, thank you, Patty.
You're welcome.
Tape is something that's
I know.
Mr. Bodett, we'll be right with you. And next item, we'll open a public hearing to consider the application for a new common victor license for Sea Dog, Nantucket LLC, doing business as Sea Dog Brew Pub. Peter Lucido, if I got that right.
Yep.
Manager for premises located at 15 South Water Street. And I think we do have someone speaking in favor, presumably, Mr. Bodett?
In favor, absolutely.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. My name is Rick Bodett. I represent Sea Dog Nantucket LLC. Peter Lucido, the manager, is with me this evening. He's in the back row.
Does he want to stand up? So, he's right there.
Sea Dog Nantucket LLC intends to open a restaurant at 15 South Water Street. What's before you is just the common victors license application. The restaurant will feature pub-type fare, brews from Sea Dog Brewing Company, as well as, uh, from locally brewed Cisco Brewers. And I ask you to approve it.
So, we have three of these? Do you want to, I guess we have to take them individually, Libby? Is that what we have to do? You know, Sea Dog, Sea Dog, Sea Dog? All right. So, anybody else wish to speak on this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing and the pleasure of the board.
Move approval.
Move approval. Made. Seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the next one we have, we'll open a public hearing to consider an application for a new annual all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license for the Sea Dog at 15 South Water Street. Mr. Bodett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, Rick Bodett for Sea Dog Nantucket LLC. They intend to open the restaurant at the premises of 15 South Water Street. I think, uh, once again, Mr. Lucido will be the manager on the license. I believe you all know the premises very well. It's been home to a number of restaurants over the years, most notably The Atlantic Cafe, begun by my friend and partner, Mr. Hunter.
A little history right here in the road.
And, most recently, Size. The, the applicant has found some success running Sea Dog Restaurants off-island, wishes to bring that success here to Nantucket. They have a good deal of experience, and hopefully, Sea Dog Nantucket will be a mainstay on South Water Street for a number of years to come.
Anybody else wish to comment? When you get it, you get it. Why don't we close the public hearing and the pleasure of the board? Michael?
Question, Mr. Chairman. Rick, will Mr. Lucido be actually onsite, full-time managing the place?
Absolutely. He'll be there 40 to 50 hours a week.
Okay. I think it's important, on the liquor license, that the manager of record be actually onsite running the operation.
Well noted.
Is the, um, is the Sea Dog No, it isn't.
The, uh, we, we actually, my apologies for submitting it late today, but yeah.
Yeah.
It's a different layout. It'll be a 90-seat capacity, which is the same as it was previously.
Got you. All right. And the pleasure of the board? Do we have a motion already? I missed it.
No.
Moved. Seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Whitey?
Uh, yeah.
I did actually.
There's competition. Patty and Whitey have got a little thing, Patty and Bobby have a motion and a second going here.
Mike did this one.
All right. So, we did that one. The next one here, we have a public hearing to consider an application for a new entertainment license for Sea Dog. Sea Dog Brew Pub, Peter's the manager at 15 South Water Street.
Ms. Chairman, I'll recuse from this.
Michael's going to step, step down for this one? And again, that leaves you at risk of a tie vote, Rick. You never know.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rick Bodett for the applicant, Sea Dog Nantucket LLC. All we're asking for in this particular entertainment license at this time is low-level background music to be played during the dinner hours, as well as perhaps a television in the lounge area. And that's it for entertainment at this time.
Have they had one before, I assume, or is this new?
They have, yeah.
They had TVs before.
Several, actually.
Yes. And now they're going to one, right?
I guess we call it amplified music still, don't we?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, we, we didn't actually apply for the amplified part. I know we've had this discussion, the board has had this discussion before. I mean, it'll be amplified in the sense that it'll be played through a CD player, iPod, something like that, but not, not anything that could, you could have a DJ through or, or any live music.
Anybody else wish to speak on the item? No? Then we'll close the public hearing and the pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Bobby moved. Whitey seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next, we'll open a public hearing to consider an application for a new common victor license for The Metropolitan Club, DBA Met on Main. Carl Goldberg, manager for premises located at 38 Main Street. Kevin, you're back with us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Well, I'm very pleased to report to you that after a long winter of lamenting the empty space at the Even Keel, there's a new quality restaurant applying for a common victuals license to be opened year-round and to serve breakfast, lunch, and dinner at this location. It's The Metropolitan Cafe, doing business at Met on Main, and the principals and owners of the restaurant are here tonight, Carl Goldberg and Kathy Trusman. And they've established themselves as quality restaurateurs with a couple of restaurants off-island. They plan to serve good food. They plan to be open with your permission from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. in the evening, and would ask that you approve their common victuals license.
Okay.
The application says 7:00 a.m.
Says?
7:00 a.m.
I think it's eight o'clock, right, that ...
It's on the app as seven, is what I'm saying, though.
What they want to do is replicate the hours that the prior Marshall's hours when he operated.
All right. Anybody else wish to speak on the matter? Why don't we close that public hearing and the pleasure of the board? Welcome back, Michael.
Move approval.
There's a motion by Patty and a second by ...
I'll second.
Bobby?
I thought was giving way to your shot.
You've got to be quick here, I'll tell you. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Kevin, we go to the next one, but let's open a public hearing to consider an application for a new annual all-alcoholic beverage restaurant license for The Metropolitan Club, DBA for premises at 38 Main Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In connection with the common victuals license you just approved, Met on Main and Mr. Shapiro and Ms. Trusman are applying for a year-round all-alcoholic beverage license for the premises and asking the board to approve the same terms and conditions on their license application that you approved for the prior owner and occupant, the Even Keel, specifically open from 8:00 a.m. to 1:30, closing at 1:00, and Monday through Saturday, and open on Sunday from 11:00 to 1:30. A little background on Mr. Shapiro and Ms. Trusman. They own property on Nantucket. They've been coming here a long time. They were married here. In fact, I don't want to embarrass her, but Ms. Trusman, in her teenage years, was a waitress at The Sweet Shop, which is the ...
There's a lot of people joining that history, so don't feel embarrassed.
So they care very much about the island, and they're dedicated to doing a good job there. Really, this restaurant won't be any different from other fine dining restaurants in the core district, like Boarding House, Ventuno, restaurants that we all know and love. I just want to note one concern. There has been a letter given to the board in opposition to this license by one resident, Father Bouchard, who I will be speaking, and I want to just address some of the concerns that he raised in the letter through his attorney, Mary Ann Hanley. First, the suggestion that somehow this restaurant operation will interfere with the spiritual activities of St. Mary's Church really is unfounded. As you know, because the restaurant's within 500 feet of the church, I believe that you, as the local licensing authority, are required to make a finding under Chapter 138, 16(c), that the proposed restaurant operation won't be detrimental to the spiritual activities of the church. And indeed, it won't be. It will be no different from The Boarding House, which has an outdoor patio, which serves liquor until 1:30 a.m., which is closer to St. Mary's than this restaurant, and no different from The Starlight, which is even closer to the church, which does the same thing, and no different from Ventuno, which is close to the church, has a patio and serves liquor, and no different from Queequeg's, does the same. The second, I ... my understanding is the second concern is somehow this proposed restaurant will interfere with or be detrimental to Father Bouchard's residence at 6 Orange Street. It abuts this property. Again, there will not be any detrimental effect on Father Bouchard's residence, just like other restaurants in town that are close to residences don't have conditions limiting their hours or limiting what they do. And look at the proximity of the Brotherhood of Thieves to Ash Lane, or Jared Coffin House to Brick Bistro to Ash Lane. The fact is that 38 Main Street, this restaurant premises, is located in the core district of Nantucket, and we expect it to be busy during the summer. The suggestion that Upper Main Street is not busy during the summer just isn't the case. There are buskers playing music along Main Street, which I think my friend, Mr. Copco, can attest to. Many people are in the drugstores. There's Arno's Restaurant across the street. Fortuitously, Father Bouchard lives next door and is concerned about speculation that there will be noise or activity in the restaurant that will be detrimental to him. First of all, that's only speculation, and second of all, it's not going to happen. There haven't been noise complaints about The Sweet Shop. There haven't been noise complaints about Espresso Cafe. There haven't been noise complaints about the Even Keel. And the license we're applying for tonight is no different from the Even Keel license, and the type of operation that this restaurant, Met on Main, will conduct there is no different from other fine dining restaurants in Nantucket. So I'd ask you to consider all of those things, and I'd like to address a couple others that may come up. I've done a fair amount of research, and I can establish pretty clearly that from prior to July 1, 1972, the effective date of the zoning bylaw, until now, there's been table service of food and beverages in the restaurant and on the patio. And historically, there have been 138 seats there. There have been 70 seats in the restaurant and 68 seats on the patio. Specifically, Marshall, the prior operator, had what they call in the trade, and I defer to my partner, Bill Hunter, on this, 12 four-tops and four-five-tops on the patio for a total of 68 seats. I know this issue has come up. It's come up from the zoning enforcement officer, Marcus Silverstein. I met with Marcus today. We reviewed the research that I did, the documentation, and he's satisfied that there are 94 aggregate seats in that premises. And that's what we're asking for, based on my discussions with Marcus today. I believe there's a memorandum in your file from licensing agent, Anne McCandrew, to that effect. So even though that we think historically, and we can show that there are 138 seats there, 94 seats are grandfathered and exempt from zoning requirements such as off-street parking, loading zone, et cetera. The other concern that I just want to raise right now is that the suggestion that somehow this restaurant will be different from the other restaurants in town is just not borne out by the facts. Although my clients operate restaurants off-island in different locations, they are sensitive to running and operating a restaurant on Nantucket. Mr. Shapiro, the manager, will be there a fair amount of the time, and there will always be a manager on premises when this restaurant is open. They care very much about the island, and I don't think it's particularly fair for one resident to control how this restaurant is open and how it's run when it's really no different from nine other restaurants in the core district, all of which can stay open till 1:30, all of which have patios, and all of which have alcoholic beverage service until 1:30 a.m. So I'd ask you to be fair, grant this license, thank my clients for willing to invest in Nantucket, and make Main Street a vibrant and happy place, not only in the summer but year-round, and grant them the license. And they're here to answer any questions you might have, and I'd be happy to do the same. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak on this matter tonight? Welcome.
Welcome. My name is Mary Ann Hanley. I represent the Roman Catholic Bishop of Fall River, a corporation, a Massachusetts nonprofit corporation, which owns the real estate located at 3 Federal Street as well as 6 Orange Street. In their capacity as owners of those properties, they received notice of the all-alcoholic beverage license application filed by Met on Main. We have ... I appreciate the presentation that Mr. Dale gave and some of his summary of what has been going on in the town in general and the outdoor patios. I think you're all aware that this property has been operated as a restaurant, coffee shop type of thing since for a very long time, and usually activity wound up at 9:00 at night. When Even Keel Restaurant was took over, they got the license, and again, they usually wrapped up activity at about 9:00 at night. As a matter of fact, the Even Keel's website, which is still online, says from 7:00 a.m. till 8:00 or 9:00 in the evening, Even Keel is bustling with activity. I also spoke with the former owner, who also confirmed for me, and he said that ... I said, you know, give me, tell me the truth. How late were you out there? He said, probably 10:00. We had closed up for the night. We understand that Mr. Goldman and Ms. Trusman want to maximize their seating capacity. They want to maximize their hours of operation. But in reality, the restaurant at this premises has never really been open late at night, and therein lies my client's concern. The rectory immediately abuts the property. There's really no separation. For those of you who know, topographically, the rectory is sort of above it and looks down into it. We hear the noise from the restaurant from 7:00 in the morning, or now I guess it's going to be 8:00 in the morning, till when they shut down at night. It's always there. As things start to quiet down on Main Street, and Main Street certainly doesn't shut down, but it does quiet down, especially in this area where there really are mostly shops, that noise is going to be exponentially louder. People who drink talk louder, get louder as the night wears on. It's, I mean, that's no, everybody knows that. It happens. We also know there are outside patios at other areas, and noise is always a factor. When you buy, walk by the gazebo at night, it's riot level or din level. I, you know, it's hard. The problem with that is at the gazebo and a lot of these other places that have outdoor patios, they're really not surrounded or not, they do not have dwellings in such close proximity. In addition to the rectory, which houses both Father Bouchard and visiting priests in the summer, which are necessary to the operation of the spiritual activities of the church, there's also a condominium, a residential condominium building with five residential units in it, which is immediately next door. The reason that we're here tonight is we don't want to stop Met on Main. We think if they can run a good establishment, we like to see them there. We like to see them make money, and we want to see everybody happy. But what we don't want that to do is to interfere with the activities that the priests of the parish have to conduct. And one of the things they need to be able to do to, in order to conduct the spiritual activities in the church, is to get a good night's rest so that they can be at the church. Saturday nights, a big night for bars. It's noisy and crazy, but Sunday morning is an even bigger day for my client. They have to be on their toes. As far as the seating goes, it's, I'm sure Mr. Dale has spent a long time with Mr. Silverstein this afternoon, and they have come up with a grandfathering of 94 seats. That does not mean that 134 seats should be allowed. There are issues with zoning, parking. That has to be addressed by another board. But I certainly think that you do need to take into consideration that the more seats there are, especially outside, the more noise there is going to be later in the evening. It's incumbent upon this board to consider the noise factor in determining this application. The guidelines from the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission require that that be done. In addition, this town, the zoning board of appeals has also considered this issue of outdoor patios and noise. In the application filed for Donald DeMarco for an outdoor patio at DeMarco's, the board of appeals specifically conditioned their approval of that on a number of certain conditions, of which I believe Mr. Hunter represented them, so that his office is well aware that the town is concerned about this. They limited seating. They required that patrons vacate the area by a certain period of time. They limited access to the outdoor patio area, and they specified that there be no bar service or a service bar in the outdoor patio. My client's preference would be to see everything quiet down and go away at 10:00 at night so that they could get some rest. However, we understand that the Met needs to be open. They need to make business. They have a substantial indoor area where they could do that, and we feel that as it goes on later in the evening, the doors would be closed, the air conditioning would be on, and we think that we could coexist with them on that basis. However, we would request that if the board were to approve this license, that they would condition it on the fact that the outdoor patio area be closed down for patron use by 10:00 at night, which comports with the noise bylaw of the town, and that there be no bar out on the patio and there be no service bar. We do have some concerns about access to the patio, but we feel that if the hours of operation of the patio were limited, that the owner of the property could see to the access and security issues at the back of the building. Father Marcel Bouchard is here, who is the pastor of St. Mary's and who is also an officer of the archdiocese of the bishop of, the Roman Catholic Bishop of Fall River. He would be happy to address some of the comments I've made. I'm sure he could certainly elucidate much better than I can what the spiritual activities of the church are and why it's very important that the priests and deacons, serving the needs of the church, both on a year-round and summer basis, have adequate rest and that the noise emanating from this proposed restaurant be somehow controlled so that can happen. Thank you.
Mary Ann, thank you. Would anybody else like to address the board on this item? Why I've got dueling hands here?
You can go with Mr. Dale if you want.
Mr. Dale. We don't want to go back and forth forever, but come on up.
Mr. Chairman, I too don't want to go back and forth forever, but I just want to clarify two things. With respect to the spiritual activities of the church, statute is clear. Section 16(c) of Chapter 138 defines church as a house of divine worship. The church building is what, is where spiritual activities take place, not the house where the priest, minister, or rabbi sleeps. You know, would that mean that if Father Bouchard lived in Wisconsin, that you'd have to control something out there because he was sleeping there? I'm not trying to make light of this, but I think it's very important. The law is very clear on this. Secondly, I didn't say this before, but I want to say it. This patio is different from other patios. You can go look at it, but it's sunken. It's surrounded by a building, a brick wall with vegetation above it, and the Nantucket Bank Building. Above the brick wall, there's more vegetation, and Father Bouchard's house is raised up above that, and between this lower patio and his higher house, there are large trees that provide a canopy. The suggestion that an enclosed patio exacerbates noise more than an open patio just doesn't stand up. These structures absorb the noise. If there are umbrellas over the table, they provide a sonic comb to keep the noise down, if there even is noise. And my point is this. You didn't speculate, and nobody speculated, about noise at The Boarding House, at Ventuno, at the Brotherhood, closer to residences than this one. It's just not appropriate to condition this license and close down the patio based on speculation by one resident. And with no criticism of Father Bouchard, I submit to you, he is a resident of the island living in a residential house next to this premises, no different from you or I living next to a premises like this. He certainly conducts spiritual activities in the church, but this proposed operation will have no adverse or deleterious effect on the spiritual activities at St. Mary's Church. So again, I ask you to be fair. Treat Met on Main like you treat all the fine dining restaurants in town, and let them go into business and show you what they can do. Obviously, if there's a problem with noise or disruption, we have ordinances, we have bylaws, we have the police department. Those are the remedies available, but please don't condition their license tonight. Thank you.
Mary Ann? And within, can we have an understanding between the parties? We're not going to go on forever.
We do have the understanding, but I would just like to respond to a couple of the things that Mr. ...
I think he responded, and you get to as well.
Mr. Dale said it's not speculation that there will be noise. It is a requirement that this board consider the potential for noise. I'm reading for the guidelines for premises to outdoor patios from the ABCC website that says a licensing authority should consider the type of neighborhood and the potential for noise in the environment, in the environments. Father Bouchard has lived in the rectory for the past two years. He hears the noise. It's constant. It's all day long. During the day, it's sort of rubs in with all the other noise on Main Street. Late at night, that noise is lessened considerably, all the other noise, and this noise will be amplified, and it will be more heard. And the other, as far as the spiritual activities of the church, we probably, you know, that, I don't agree with Mr. Dale. I think the spiritual activities of the church are not merely the services that are held in the church. I think the spiritual activities have to do with the people that provide the services and have the services. The spiritual activities are determined by the priest and by the parishioners. The church is the priest and the parishioners. Yes, the building is the church. I can't, I can't argue with him about that, but I certainly think to categorically say that disrupting the lives and the health of the priests of the church will not be to the detriment of the spiritual activities of the church. And I would appreciate your putting, if you decide to approve this, put some sort of reasonable conditions on the use of the outdoor patio so that we don't have to call the police in the middle of the summer, and we don't have to come here in the middle of the summer and try and get this restaurant closed down. It's not fair to my client to have to do that, and frankly, it's not fair to the applicant to have that done. What we would like to do is come up with a license tonight that we can live with so that everybody can go forward. They can have their restaurant. My client can get some rest. Thank you.
Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually represent the landlord, so just a minute to speak, speak on behalf of NAR Retail. I think that the presumptions that anybody who holds a license, whether it's a license to sell alcohol or a license to drive a car or fly a plane, that the presumption is the licensing agency won't give the license out because the person who's about to get it is going to speed, as an example, or fly the plane improperly, or be an irresponsible seller of alcohol, is something that is unfair. It's fundamentally unfair for licensing agency to presume that this, that this restaurant will be improperly run to the degree that people will be in the back, on the patio, at 11:00 or 12:00 at night, and being loud. The Board of Selectmen has agencies here on Nantucket, the police department. Mary Ann was very clear about that. The Board of Health, the zoning administrator, who can enforce the very concerns that the father is concerned about. To somehow limit the license in advance of seeing how this operation is run makes no sense, I think. Makes no sense to the island of Nantucket for the Board of Selectmen to take a position like that and discourage people from coming to the island who want to add value to Nantucket. Kathy Trusman and Carl Goldberg have lived on Nantucket for years. I think they bought a house out here maybe as early as 2003. They're restaurant peoples. I mean, I bring a little bit, I'm speaking on behalf of my client, but I also understand this business. And I've looked at their menus. They're very sophisticated. They're very innovative. If you take the time to search the web on TripAdvisor or menu pages in Boston, you'll see that review after review after review talks about how innovative the food is, how good the service is, and how well ... is, how good the service is, and how well-run these restaurants are. To somehow presume they're going to come to Nantucket and ruin what is now an excellent reputation makes no sense to me at all. They live here. They want to do, they want to, they want to do well by the town and they want to do well by their company, which is very successful because they're good restaurant people. So I suggest, on behalf of, of my client and, and the prospective tenant, that you approve this license, that you allow them to operate Met on Main, you allow them to prove to the town of Nantucket the value they can add to Main Street, and to the extent, over the course of the next three months, or six months, or 12 months, or two years, Ms. Hanley's client has a problem with how they're running the operation, then you'll have every opportunity to restrict them. But to restrict them in advance of understanding how they run their restaurant makes no sense, it's fundamentally unfair. And I'll make one more point, if I may. There are five other residences that are right out back that are actually much closer than the rectory. That's the, that's the condominium that Mary Ann mentioned to you. There are five dwellings in there. Now, maybe you have letters in there of concern from the five other residences. I don't know. I don't think you do, but you do have a single letter from a single residence out back. So you have five, to the extent you don't have letters. You have five that haven't said anything, that remain silent. I don't necessarily say that that means they're in favor of it, but they're clearly not against it. And you have one who's raised a concern. And it may be a fair concern, and your opportunity is to address that concern by granting the license as requested, and then to the extent they don't run their operation correctly, you can penalize them by restricting their hours down the road. And I just, I thank you for your time in this matter. And I'm happy to answer questions on behalf of the landlord, should you have any. Thank you.
Thanks. Is a hand up and back here, Mr. Flanagan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Jason Flanagan. Having had the good fortune to experience one of their other restaurants, I'm very excited to have this one opening. The type of environment that we're talking about here is not a nightclub, so the concerns about noise as compared to other establishments such as, say, the Bamboo Supper Club, or even the Boarding House that sometimes, or the gazebo, I believe that would be inaccurate. I haven't looked at the plans for this, but insofar as a service bar, having worked in food service a great many years, for good or ill, that is usually an essential portion of operations. It greatly speeds up the process, especially when you have as much real estate as we're talking about. And generally, I would think it a good thing to have this business come into town, especially if they're going to be open year-round, as we saw this past winter, many are not. And I would think the board would be remiss to either deny or restrict such an applicant who is devoted to seeing a vibrant year-round economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak? Yes, Father?
Good evening. I'm Father Bouchard, and thank you. But I, I was very happy to hear that our business was going to be taking the place occupied by the Even Keel because it's going to be good for the town, and I'm very pleased about that, and wish them every success. I'd just like to address the issue of noise from my own experience, now having lived on Orange Street for two years. The back wall of the patio area is a concrete wall, and I think that causes more reverberation than absorbs the sound, so it tends to go up and flow into our yard. And I can live with the experience that we've had in the past. And, and I can tell you, you can hear, you can hear conversation, you can hear glasses clinking together, you can hear silverware hitting plates, and that much I can deal with until a reasonable hour. But I just don't want anyone to minimize the, the concept of the noise that gets shed into the backyard. I can't speak for my neighbors. I have a hunch that many of them are not on the island right now, but I just wanted to be clear about what the noise is like.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Are we all set? Mary Ann?
Just, just to echo what Father said and to address a point that Mr. Hunter made. When I spoke to Mr. Dale the other day, we, he said, you know, it's just going to be just like the Even Keel, probably open till 10, outside activity 10 or 11 at night. In reality, what they are asking for is to be open until 1:30 in the morning, to be open at full business operations until 1:30 in the morning. What we are requesting is that if they want to have full business operations in the interior of the, of the restaurant, we'll learn to live with it. We'll still hear the noise, but we'll learn to live with it. However, we do believe that there will be an extreme noise level on the outside, which will be deleterious to the neighborhood, and which you should consider and that you should limit in your decision if you decide to approve this. Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else? Whitey?
Yeah, Father, Even Keel, they were saying they, they, most of the noise stopped at 10 o'clock, or they didn't have any customers. Did you notice?
Oh, yes, to respond to that, Whitey. Yes, I don't remember any noise much after 9:00.
Yeah.
Okay, certainly not after 10:00. It was very quiet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then to the proponents over here, would this adversely shutting it down, not allowing meals after 10 o'clock, would that adversely affect the, the operation just out in the patio?
Without question, it would kill the deal. And let me say this. With respect to cutting back, I just echo my partner's comments, there shouldn't be a presumptive move here to cut back on hours when you don't do it anywhere else. I mean, really, really important, the only, my research in core district restaurants is the only entity that conditions hours, has conditioned restaurant hours with patios downtown. It's been the zoning board, not the selectmen. All the restaurants in town with patios that haven't been before the zoning board have the 1:30 close. And again, it's, as far as I know. And I want to make it clear that one resident should not be determinative of conditions on a license when there's no evidence that this operator will cause noise.
Yeah. Well, I think we have had other cases. We got the Muse, for instance.
Well, I think it's different. I think I'm talking about core district fine dining restaurants. I know the board's conditioned hours at Summer House, far different, because there were noise complaints before the restaurant, the license application came in. There have been no noise complaints against my clients. They are new operators. They are going to do a good job. I think you ought to have faith in them and let them show you that they can run an operation, a fine dining restaurant year-round in Nantucket, just like the other fine dining restaurants do, and don't presume they're going to be noisy.
Kevin, we're repeating ourselves here?
I have some questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
I have some questions for the actual applicants themselves. You plan on doing two seedings, I assume?
I'm afraid you probably have to go to the mic. Sorry, ma'am. All right.
This is, this is, this application says restaurant. I'm assuming that you're going to be mainly focused on serving food, correct?
Yes.
So on a, in your other restaurants now, what time do you serve food till?
We serve food until 1:00 in the morning and-
And you plan to do that here as well? Your kitchen will stay open till 1:00 in the morning?
Kitchen will stay open, yes, yes. I mean, I think it's a great option to be able to go out at 12 o'clock at night and have food. It doesn't happen often.
Other questions here? Michael, you're next.
I do, Mr. Chairman, have a couple of questions. And I do, I believe the Brotherhood is restricted on their patio to 11 o'clock, having been thrown off that patio a number of times at 11:01.
And I believe if you walk by the, the Boarding House patio at 11 o'clock, there's no one sitting out there having dinner.
But that's, that's, but that wasn't really the point. I, I do think there's a precedent for that. I'm not suggesting that in this case. I'm not really ready to vote on this license at this time because my concern has to do with the, with the manager of record that's on the license, which is listed as Mr. Goldberg. And he, he lists that he intends to be on the premises an average of 25 hours a week on the application. In my opinion, we should, we should license, we should, we should issue licenses with full-time professional restaurant managers committing to be on-site a minimum of 40 hours a week. Also, I understand that, that you guys are seasonal residents, which I have nothing against that, but as, as it's a year-round, all-alcohol liquor license, I would like to see a professional restaurant manager listed as a full-time employee who will be the responsible party to the license. We've had problems with this.
Well, you mentioned that earlier tonight.
I can address that, actually. All of our managers, right now, we're in our hiring phase. I, as the owner, am applying for the license. I will actually be on-site. We have an apartment that is actually next to the building at 40 Main Street that I will be residing at. I'll be spending more than 25 hours, you know, here, all the time. Once we have a full-time manager on-site, we will transfer that license and make him the manager, as we do in all of our restaurants, and that will be a full-time general manager. We always have at least two managers on our premises at all times in all of our restaurants. And I'd like to say one thing, we are not, we're a restaurant. Do we serve alcohol like every other restaurant? Yes. But we are not the gazebo. We don't even allow our bartenders to serve shots to anyone in all of our restaurants. We have specific rules that we try and follow. And we are very conscious of the neighborhood, we're very conscious of our neighbors, and we try and work with everybody. But we cannot operate in five months and be profitable and be a vibrant restaurant. And we're talking about five months. I mean, the other seven months, the patio is not available. I mean, there's nobody out there. It's winter time. So we're not talking about, we will be open year-round for everyone else. So that's, that's the answer to your question.
I have one other question.
One other, then we'll go to Patty right after you.
I'd like to have seen also a drawing of the patio, what the concept is for the patio. I'm assuming, yeah, I don't, I don't have it anywhere in my stuff. Okay. I didn't, I didn't see it in there.
I'll give you a copy. You can look at mine, Michael.
I have this drawing.
You don't have to pay which page number? It's usually one way to get there. 191? Thanks.
If I may, coach.
191. All right. Thank you.
Let me just, for, for the record, I have a copy of the Brotherhood of Thieves license. There is no restriction whatsoever on service on the patio. The premises include, just so I read them, two-story building, all egresses on Broad Street, 212 restaurant seats, 60 patio seats, 685 square feet of storage, and the hours of operation, no alcohol service permitted after 1:00 a.m., and patrons must be off the licensed premises, and said premises must be closed by 1:30 p.m. And no service before 11:00 on Sunday. So there's no restriction there.
No, not from us, but from planning.
There may be, but again, we're not, we're just before the selectmen tonight.
Do you need to go to the ZBA frame, just to sort of half-answer that question?
Mr. Chairman, I think we will have to go if we want to increase seating over 94.
So it's a seating issue would take you there.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So you don't need to go to the ZBA if you don't increase the seating?
Over 94.
But the ZBA told the Boarding House that they couldn't run their patio after 11 o'clock.
When they, when they-
No, to be clear, the planning board, as part of the major commercial development special permit for the Brotherhood, put that condition on. The ZBA has put conditions on other places with respect to hours, but as far as I know, the Board of Selectmen hasn't limited hours of operation for service of alcohol on patios in core district restaurants with respect to liquor license hearings.
Patty, I think you had a question, please.
Well, I don't know if we're, not a question, just a sort of statement. We'll wait until we hear the-
Wait, wait, until we hear. All right. Mary Ann, if we can, you understood, this is it? You promised me? I'll feel a lot better if I'll take your promise.
Just in response to what the applicant said about their hours of operation, in looking at the websites for the Metropolitan Club's various other operations, that may not be gospel, things may change, those things change all the time, but I noticed that their hours of operation for their Natick facility, and by the way, their Natick and their Dedham, and I believe their Chestnut Hill facilities are all located inside shopping malls. Natick is open till 9:00 weeknights, 10:00 Saturday night, and Sunday brunch. Dedham is open till 9:00, 10:00 Wednesday and Thursday, 11:00 Friday and Saturday. I'm not, I think Chestnut Hill is actually private. I'm not sure about the hours there, and I know the Boston location, right on, I think it's Boylston Street, is, they're open till 1:00 in the morning.
That's the dining room, not the bar.
The dining.
The bars are open until 1:00.
The bars are open.
There's the bar menu. And the bar menu is open.
Okay. So will there be a bar menu proposed for this facility?
Yes, yes. There will be a bar menu.
So you'd like to serve food out on the patio till 1:00 a.m.?
Yes, I would. You know, we have a limited number of weeks where you can do the numbers.
I understand.
And certainly, yeah. It'd be nice to have somebody be able to have dinner out there and have a glass of wine.
And if I could just finish up, because you let her answer the question. And yes, as Mr. Dale points out, the liquor licenses don't have any special restrictions on them because, for the Boarding House and for DeMarco's, because the other town boards got to them first and they put the restrictions on. And I don't, I think the Selectmen certainly have the discretion, as the local licensing authority, to put restrictions on, and I don't think that they need to stick their head in the sand and say, there's not going to be any noise, and let some other board take care of it.
Mary Ann, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If we, we're all set out there? Thank you very much. You, you didn't have to promise, Kevin, but, but you knew it was coming. All right. So with the pleasure of the board, any other questions we'd like to ask? I am, as soon as we make sure we're all set on that. So we'll close the public hearing, and board members, questions, comments? Anybody want to get underway with the motion? Or where are we? Patty?
Yes, I wanted to just state that, you know, this, the nature of downtown is very unique. We mix residential with commercial, and we do it in a way that I think attempts to balance a lot of different, different issues, the different rights, different responsibilities. I personally find it difficult to set a precedent to essentially provide a punitive restriction on an establishment that has not yet demonstrated a problem. I do think that we've taken action in the past where we've addressed issues, we've addressed them aggressively. We can do it at any time of the year if there is a problem, but we've not ever, in my recollection, preempted ourselves by suggesting that there's already a problem before we even have a chance to operate. So I would say that in my, you know, in my sense, we can grant this license as requested, that we would be open and available should there, should issues arise with respect to this. Obviously, we all know that downtown Nantucket as a whole needs to maximize the income in, in the short few months that it has. I personally think it's a nice service to be able to go out late in, in, in an environment that's a controlled environment, not a nightclub environment. That's an option that we're all looking for. So personally, I think that, and given your answers to the questions about the general manager, I think Mike had a good point with respect to asking those questions. I would be willing to support this.
Other comments? Whitey?
Yeah, I'm not a restaurateur, but looking at this diagram here, I can see where the majority of the business, at least the seats, are outside. It just looks that way. And so that, that becomes an essential part. It isn't an essential part.
It's about half.
Oh, okay. Now, are you going to increase the lighting at, at, at the outside sites?
I imagine so. Just, I would, the safety sake, probably, whatever lighting is needed would be very subdued and comfortable and appropriate for the patio.
Yeah. I don't know whether you're going to run into light pollution.
All the other patios that we have, they have full, known lights on.
Downlighting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Michael?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm with Patty on this as well. I'm with Patty on this as well. I can't see, you know, punishing folks for stuff that hasn't happened yet. These people clearly are professionals in the business. I do think that having food service late downtown is a really good idea. I'm not sure Nantucket needs another $22 hamburger, but, so maybe the menu can be reflect.
A bar menu?
That was a bar menu. I was looking at the bar menu.
Maybe a $5 hamburger night, right?
But, but I, I think, I think it's great to have a business going into that spot with folks who clearly know what they're doing and have been successful elsewhere. So, I'll support the application.
Other comments? Bobby?
I just have some comments for the applicants and for the general audience. I understand what both my colleagues are saying here about penalizing someone out of the gate, but I think it's important for the applicants to realize, I've heard them say here tonight, that they have to maximize their business in order to pay the rent that NIR is requiring. And I want the applicants to be very prepared for if they sign this lease, there is a good chance that if we get enough complaints, and I believe we will, that we will be coming, you'll be coming in front of this board again, and we will be shutting your patio down at 10 or 11 o'clock at night. The majority, and I don't know of any patios that serve food in Nantucket after 10 o'clock at night. Our restaurants, the way they're set up right now, no one serves food after 10 or 11 o'clock. They shut down, and they just serve cocktails, and they bring everyone inside. The Boarding House does it, the Brotherhood does it, all those other downtown establishments that have residents close by. I know some of the residents that live in the captain's house behind there, they're not here now, and I guarantee you, we will be getting noise complaints from them, and I want the applicants to be prepared that it could happen. And, you know, Kevin, you're right. They haven't had any complaints, but they, that patio's never been open past 9, 10 o'clock at night before. And I don't care, I know how much noise carries. I get off my boat at 9:00 at night, and I can hear every outside bar. I hear the ones, I can hear, I can hear the lobster trap at my boat at night, you know, and that's a long way away. So, we're going to get complaints, I believe we will. You know, people are going to not like all of a sudden all this activity back there. So, I just want you to be prepared that there's a good chance it could be shut down on you at 10 o'clock, like the rest of the services in town that serve food outside.
And we've had some long discussions before the board about the Boarding House and people who live around it, so we've been through it before. Whitey?
A couple of observations. One, we got a lot of bad weather around here, and what happens when you get rained out?
We won't be using the patio.
Pardon me?
It'll be, it'll be quiet on the patio on rainy nights.
I'll come to Whitey's house.
I saw it.
Michael?
I make a motion to approve as presented, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Any further discussion among the board? I think we're all sort of understanding, and you understand, and we're confident you're going to get the right.
Well, you know, they're going to have to come back here as they change managers, so we're going to have a.
Yeah, we'll have ample opportunity.
We got another bite of the apple.
You bet. And if we, and if it doesn't work, we'll get another chance. So, we have a motion and a second? Patty?
Just as a comment, and I think we've done this successfully with other establishments to work with the neighbors. I mean, it's really not our, up to us. There were some comments made by Father, which I think are well-taken with respect to the, you know, to the substance on the wall, you know, the cement.
This is for.
Right.
We've dealt with neighbors. I was on location.
Right. And maybe mitigating that somehow and keeping communication open. I would encourage that, because we don't, we don't like to be the arbitrator, frankly.
I understand. I think that's a great idea.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion here at the board? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right. So, good luck, and Father, keep in touch, okay? We're listening.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we will open our public hearing to consider an application for a new annual wine and malt beverages package store license for Bartlett's Ocean View Farm, Inc., John W. Bartlett, manager, for premises located at 33 Bartlett Farm Road, Nantucket.
For the applicant, Mary Ann Hanley.
Mary Ann, is.
On the other end of it.
Yeah, I was, wasn't going to say anything. Thank you, Bobby.
I'll call it like I see it.
That's part of the job. What can I say?
You know, it's just part of the deal. That's the way it goes.
It's part of the deal.
Are you representing the applicant?
I am representing the applicant, Bartlett's Ocean View Farm, Inc., which has applied for an annual Section 16 retail license for the sale of wine and malt beverages at 33 Bartlett Farm Road. The manager will be John Bartlett, who is here, who's happy to address any questions that you may have. The proposed license premises is on the first floor of the existing farm stand building out on Bartlett Road. What we are asking to do, what we are planning to do is to dedicate approximately 90 square feet of the existing first-floor retail area to the sale of wine and malt beverages. There would be a 50-foot, I think, 50-square-foot cooler for beer, and then, yeah, 40 feet, which would have malt beverages, wine, and a very small cooler. The cooler, one of the coolers would be at the back of the building where the coolers are now for, you know, the eggs and the prepared foods, right next to the double doors that lead to the back room. The other area would all be right up next to the cash register, that's at the furthest wall on the left-hand side of the building. There would be, the cooler would be locked at night, the, and there would also be shelving, some sort of a system that will pull down to cover the wine and the malt, so that when the store is open on Sunday mornings, until we can sell that, it's not available. There would also be locked storage for inventory, about 40 square feet, in the interior of the building at the back, which is not open to the public. Our hours of operation would be the same as the hours of operation for the farm stand. We would be closed by 6:00 at night. Bartlett's employs 39 employees, at this point, 30 of whom are full-time, year-round residents. We have four part-time, year-round residents. In the summer, we go up to 118 employees. The Bartletts have run the farm stand and business on the island for several hundred, for over 100 years. They're good citizens, they know how to do the work, they know how to follow the regulations. We do not, we know that there have been some letters filed in opposition that are concerned that this is a supermarket license and that they will be stealing business away from other facilities. We do not feel that that's a correct assumption based upon the modest display area that we are proposing. We feel that, and we've taken that into consideration, we talked about this for a long time. John has said to me, "I'm a farmer, I don't want the liquor license to run my life." He said, "I want it small, I want to keep it small." So, if you have questions, John is here, and we're happy to address them.
John, you want to address this before we open it up here?
Sure. John Bartlett, and I'm the president at Bartlett's Farm. You know, we're out on 33 Bartlett Farm Road, and, you know, I really see this as just an extension of my existing business and a service that I'm offering to my customers, and to give them, you know, a small selection of, you know, of wine, you know, some red, some white, a couple of champagnes, to pair with the food that we grow, that we produce, and that we offer, you know, our customers, so. And I'm happy to answer any questions. We are open until 7:00, kind of in season, so that's usually like the third week of June through the day before, Labor Day. We do stay open till 7:00 in the evening. Hours are 8 to 7:00 then. Currently, in the winter, it's 10 to, it's 10 to 6:00, and we're not open on Sundays. We are open on Sundays in the fall.
Any questions for John while he's up before we go to the, Whitey?
Yeah. What are you doing about the tip control?
I'm going to have to comply with that like every other operator will have to comply, comply with. You know, there's courses that anybody that, you know, is going to sell alcohol to one of our customers will have to take, and that's a regulatory issue that I'll certainly comply with.
Is everybody going to go? Are they going to check out through your regular checkout?
Yeah, we have, the point-of-sale system that we use actually flags alcohol. It's set up as a separate type of item, so it will, as it comes across the scanner, it actually stops the sale and requires the input of a, of a birth date. It also, it also knows if the cashier who's logged on is 18 or not. So, if they're not 18, they can't, they couldn't, they couldn't, they couldn't process the sale.
Are they all going to go through the tip control program?
Yes, sir.
And how many checkout people would be involved?
I currently have five checkouts.
And they do the, they do the full-time? You don't have backups?
No, I don't have backups. And again, it just depends, currently now I have, you know, two checkouts. I have two people. So, it just, again, some of that just depends upon the time of year.
John, I think here are the questions here. Would some, anybody else like to speak on this item tonight? Yes, sir. Do we got a tape break just as you come up? Hold on. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Ms. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Robert Wykowski, and I represent Alan LaFrance and Mary Walsh, who's the owner of Nantucket Wine and Spirits here in Nantucket. They are unable to attend today, but wish for me to voice their opposition to this motion. Members of the board, there has been a letter submitted on behalf of Mrs. Walsh, which I hope you've all had an opportunity to read, her opposition letter. First of all, the reason for their objection to the issuance of this license is not a complaint against free enterprise, but it's rather because there's a fear that this issuance would set a dangerous precedent. We ask that the Board of Selectmen consider what's in the best interest for the future integrity of the town, and act to protect the existing small businesses, specifically the existing package stores that are struggling in this hard economic times. While Bartlett Farm is not categorized, categorized as a grocery store, certainly the scope of its business is comparable, and by allowing an annual beer and wine license, we're afraid that the Board of Selectmen would be setting a dangerous precedent and open the door in the future to chain grocery stores receiving similar license consideration. We ask that the board consider whether the island with its current population of year-round residents has reached a saturation point, whether there is in fact a need for additional beer and package stores. Additionally, in considering this, we ask that the Board of Selectmen consider whether the specific location where Bartlett is located in close proximity to Cisco Brewery, whether there is an active need in that area. We ask that the Board of Selectmen act to protect the island's existing small businesses, and for that reason, we ask that they deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else this evening? Mary Ann?
Is there anyone else?
I don't, I think you're in at the moment.
Just a quick response to Mr. Wykowski. As I said, we mindfully established our application so that what we are selling and the space in which we are selling it is somewhat limited. We certainly are cognizant of the fact that other businesses want to be protected, but the fact of the matter is that there are licenses available, their availability is determined by the state on a quota system. There's another license available that's currently unused. Any supermarket, they're right, a supermarket could certainly come in, and we, the Stop and Shop could come in tomorrow with an application. However, we feel that our application could certainly be distinguished from an application that would be filed by the Stop and Shop. Bartlett's is a local business, it's been a local business for years, it's not a chain. In offering a modest display of wine and malt beverages, what we're trying to do is enhance our business and make our business work. Farming's not easy, it's a lot of work, and frankly, what's produced in the fields doesn't begin to cover the cost of what, doesn't begin to cover the cost of what it takes to produce it. It's that simple. So, we're trying to do something here, as John said, that his customers have asked for, that will enhance the quality of their existing product, and we're certainly trying to do it in a manner that's not going to interfere with the other businesses on the island.
Would anybody else like to speak on this matter tonight? Why don't we close the public hearing? And any questions, comments, discussion from the board? Michael, then we'll move down.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like John Bartlett a lot. I have a tremendous amount of respect for him as a businessman and a man of integrity. I think he would manage this thing perfectly well. I can't support this license application for reasons I've enumerated in the past when other licenses have come up. I do think that we were beyond a saturation point on the island with liquor licenses. I do think the slippery slope about, I think characterizing whether, whether John's store is a supermarket or not is sort of a game of nomenclature. People look at it, and I think they, they have a pretty good idea of what it is. And like I say, I think, I think they do a fine job there. But I think there are plenty of other places out there, local business owners like John, trying to make their businesses work as well. And to the extent that the board does regulate this industry through licensing of establishments, I think we have a responsibility to find in the public interest that the economy of the island is also affected by our regulation of this industry. I don't think that we need another place to buy alcohol. So, I, I'm not sure that the, the state guidelines on how many licenses we have to give and all that, I, those never made a whole lot of sense to me, anyway. But for those reasons, I'm not going to support this license.
I understand. Other questions or comments? Patty?
Yeah, I like, like Michael, I know John and appreciate the business out there, but my concern is less about the saturation, but more about the grocery store aspect. I don't, I don't see a difference between Bartlett Farm and a grocery store, and I believe it would be a slippery slope to, to give or grant this license to Bartlett Farm for that reason. So, I can't support this either tonight.
Any comments or questions? Whitey?
Yeah. I gather this is called a farm stand. Is that what it's, it's called? And those are certain rules, they're different from grocery store rules?
Yes.
And permitting only?
Farm stands and agricultural uses have different permitting statutes.
Yeah. Now, you do serve meals.
There is takeout food. Yes, there is takeout food.
But, but you do serve meals upstairs.
Right. Those are.
But those are private.
Those are private events, and we're not proposing to expand upstairs. We're, all we're planning to do is to have a sale of retail product down on the first floor, essentially right by the cash register. We're not proposing to license the upstairs for the sale of real estate, either the sale of retail liquors or storage, or we're just planning to keep it right.
Are all the vegetables that you sell, are they grown on Bartlett's Farm?
No. Not all the vegetables that I sell are grown, are grown on the farm. I have over 100 acres of vegetables that I grow. I, I hope the board realizes the extent of my operation in agriculture on, you know, on this island and the commitment of my family. It is, it is correct that, you know, there are some semantics about whether or not, you know, I'm a farm stand or I'm a grocery store. I was, I am fully licensed to do, to do what I do at the location that I do it, and I follow all the regulations that I, that I am required to follow. Whether or not you view me as Stop and Shop or Grand Union or Whole Foods, you know, I don't know, and whether or not this will lead you to believe that if you don't think the Stop and Shop is going to come before you at some point, whenever what new grocery store ends up here in the next couple of years, I think you're mistaken. It is going to happen, and they are not local companies. They have not been here for six generations. They're not open year-round, as I have been. And they do not, you know, they fly, people fly people in back and forth. I support many. I support many, many local organizations. So, no, not all my grocery, not all my vegetables that I sell are grown on Nantucket.
Any questions or comments from the board? Bobby?
You know, everything that I was going to say was said.
Yeah. I, I just have a couple of questions and Libby to help us a little bit on the numerical. I understand Michael's comment, it's always been a little elusive what the limits are. But I am curious, how many of these can we grant? Have been granted?
Sure. Annual wine and malt package store license quota is five. We have issued three. Seasonal wine and malt package store licenses quota is 11. We have three.
So there are a fair number of open seasonal, but year-round there are two?
Correct.
So, Mary Ann, so there are two licenses. So anybody essentially could come in and apply for those licenses, right? Presumably. Yes, Michael?
Well, I'd, I'd like to remind the board too that $125,000 of taxpayers' money was spent on a conceptual design for the Wilkes Square area. And as part of that conceptual, we got a report from an economist on, on contract to those architects. And that economic report indicated that we are oversaturated with retail space in general and that we, we can't support the retail space that we already have. So I think it's important that we do what we can to support businesses that are already here and being run by local people.
Which, which one might say this is? Bobby?
I wasn't going to comment, I was just going to vote, but just for clarification, I agree, you know, whether it's a superma, a grocery store or a farm stand, it's a matter of interpretation. It quacks like a duck and it walks like a duck and it talks like a duck, it's usually a duck. And, you know, that being said, it's not about whether it's, to me, it's not about whether it's a grocery store or, or it's a farm stand. It's about how many liquor licenses and how many businesses we have here. And yes, we have space for two more malt and wine stores, but we, if you add in the regular full package stores, which also, also sell wine and, and beer, we have more than enough. And, and I watch these, all these businesses struggle each year, and I just think that we need to dial it down. I mean, not even just with the, with package stores or malt stores, but but also with restaurants. The restaurant industry in this town is struggling, and part of the reason that it is is because we've given out liquor licenses to anyone who wants one. And I personally am not going to give out new liquor licenses. I, I'm just at that point where any new business that come here and in here now, they're going to have to really prove that they need a liquor license to survive, because the ones that do have liquor licenses are not surviving. Look at the turnover we're having in restaurants every year. So, you know, I, for that reasons, those reasons, I can't support this application.
It used to be that way.
Yeah, you know, just a couple of thoughts as we go through this, and Libby, we may need some advice here on when you have a denial. Are there some items the board has to be prepared to follow through on?
The board needs to be prepared to state the reasons for the denial specifically.
Yeah. You know, my concern here a little bit is a little different. I think once you start down this path, I think we're going to, at least in my sense, ought to clarify our policy here so people know in advance. So I, I have a little different take than my fellow members here in that I think we'd be better off to figure that policy out for the next applicant, and I'm not prepared to say no to this one. But I, I sense how the board's going to proceed at this moment. So I think in your deliberations or in your motion, somebody is going to have to be prepared for the reasons. I don't know if that has to be in the motion or it could be after the fact, but we are required to write a letter so the applicant knows our reasons. And if it's because it's a grocery store or because there are too many package stores, I think we have to be prepared to say what we're about here, so. Whitey?
Yeah, I think it's also important to look at location. In other words, you need a place in, in Scotsette because you don't want people to drive all the way to town. So having a, a bit of dispersion is important, and this is a, a little bit of dispersion. So rather, so that there's, there's the, the flip side of this.
Right. We have, what do we sell? Beer and wine at the West Ender?
Yeah.
So there's there, there's Scotsette. And I sort of sense this is another little, whether we like it or not, it's a bit of a hub that's developed. So, anyway, I think we get a sense. Other comments? Does the board wish to make a motion tonight?
Mr. Chairman, if you need a, a reasoning for this, I'll give you my reasoning for it.
Well, I think the board, I'm not, ought to agree on the reason if we're writing the letter. I mean, that makes sense to me. So.
I, I'll just to sort of note, I mean, I'm probably the only one that doesn't actually agree with that, but I think the numbers would, would make that the reason in terms of what I've heard in terms of consensus.
We have a quota of two, two full liquor licenses and five wine and malt licenses. So that gives us a total quota of seven, but yet we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight licenses out there now. Now, to me, there, there may be some distinction as far as what's sold in them, but it's the overall number that I have the issue with. We already have eight and our total quota is seven. So even though there's a couple of applications, openings for the, the wine and malt beverages, I feel that we're, we're saturated at this point, and that's why I would not support this. I'm, I'm reading that annual and seasonal package stores, annual all alcohol package stores, we have a quota of two and we have five. And annual wine and malt package stores, we have a quota of five and we have three. So.
You might say we have one more than we're really supposed to have.
Exactly.
Yeah, I'm trying to pay attention to that. Two and five sounds like a.
Seven, but we have eight right now, so.
Yeah, Michael?
Mr. Chairman, my recollection is that we, it, it would be prudent for us to make a finding in the public interest in the form of a motion, and I'd be willing to make that motion that the board denies this license application upon finding that it would not be in the public interest to create another retail year-round package store license, given the fact that we are already three over on our all alcohol licenses and that the aggregate is, is over as it is and that we don't find that to be in the public interest. That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion, Mr. Willauer?
Yeah, I, you know, these rules are set in Boston. They're based on sort of semi-arbitrary criteria. We have a population that goes up and down, and we don't know how many people that we really have during the summer. And we don't know how many people we have during the winter either. We'd like to think we do, but we don't. I've tried to measure it and it's kind of ambivalent. So we really have to look at it from a Nantucket point of view of what makes sense for the island, not what makes sense listening to the, the rules from Boston, because we've got wiggle room within their rules. So I think we have to look at it, does it make sense on the island and why? Or if it doesn't make sense, then we have to go by the Boston rules because we, we have to have a justifiable methodology for turning it down.
But we have a motion. Patty?
Yeah, I just wanted to sort of clarify, Whitey, I think what we're trying to do is be consistent in our application. It seems to me that if we look at those two top categories of applicant, applicants as one, because in effect it has the same impact, then Bobby's point is well taken, which is that we're already over quota, generally speaking. So I think that that makes the motion.
Right. So, so just so I understand, that would suggest that anybody else who comes in the door tomorrow? We'd have a similar response, and that would be consistent with what we're adopting as a policy tonight, which is okay. I think that's important to understand.
I'd second Michael's motion.
So it's a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay. Three to two, the application is denied, and I presume we will prepare a letter in accordance with the resolution. Okay? All right, thank you all. We now have, I want to say the grand finale, but what we have are the public hearing, and I'll open a public hearing to consider the 2012-13 seasonal liquor license renewals. We have in our package an Excel spreadsheet which lists all the business entities that are seeking renewal of their licenses and a report from the police department that indicates their activities in monitoring compliance with the appropriate regulations has been pretty good with what one maybe exception, which didn't seem too serious. So that's where we are at the moment. Bobby?
I just have a question. Some of them are highlighted. Is there a reason for that? Or is that just?
Yeah.
No, I mean, on this list I'm looking.
Oh.
There are like, some are in.
Those are the seasonals.
Those are the seasonals. Thank you.
Patty?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I will have to recuse myself from one of these applications, but at least in the interest of expediency, I think I'm okay to just recuse myself from, from the whole package.
Hopefully we'll be able to accomplish our objective.
Right, without me. So, thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, so any further discussion on these?
Before we go any farther, let me look at the list and make sure I don't have to recuse myself on some too. Yes, I have one.
Two recusals, now we're down to three.
I got a recusal too.
Oh, gee. We ought to pick up, if we're going to be that way, maybe we ought to pick them off one at a time.
Rule of necessity.
Pardon?
Rule of necessity.
Well, rule of necessity, or we could just exclude the ones people are, you know, so we could all be here and Patty could not. I think, does this work?
Boarding House Pearl. And the other, what's it called?
So we just mentioned the ones so we're clear in what we're doing? Is that?
Right, and their other restaurant. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So there's Patty will recuse on those, and Bobby, you're?
Slip 14.
Slip 14, and Whitey, you're?
Yacht Club.
Yacht Club. So with those recusals on those specific items, are there further?
Do customers have to recuse, Mr. Chairman?
We'd be in trouble.
Customers can go anyplace under the rule of necessity. That's a new rule.
You're already acknowledging, you get thrown out early anyway, so.
Right. And board members should not be thrown out early, please. All right, other questions? Is there a motion then to approve with those recusals? Been moved, seconded, Mr. Willauer?
Sure.
Sure, thank you very much. Any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With those specific items. All right, thank you all.
Now, do we have to get up from our?
I got up.
You got up. Are you going to do those ones individually?
We just passed those.
We just passed them here specifically, recused on those items in the minutes for the record.
I was just checking.
Okay. No, I think that should do it. Then the next item on our agenda is selectmen reports and comments. We do have one item because we do have one additional open meeting law complaint filed against the Nantucket Energy Study Committee. And, Mr. Willauer, it's fair to say we're underway in reviewing the.
Yeah, we've contacted town council, and the town council is working on it because this is a very murky area, and we should have it within the, a result from them within the, the limits. So I think we're on track.
Right, we have, there's a time limit, 14 days or whatever it is.
Yeah, 14 working days.
It's not.
14 business days.
14 business days. So that committee itself will have to respond, and we'll know what the facts are, whether we feel there was a violation or not.
It's not you, it's, it's town council.
Town council, right, town council, sorry.
And the attorney general.
I have a CPC issue for this board, and I just want to bring it up. The Tri-Works lease, you were there, Rick, for that yesterday. That's the, which house is that? The? Silver House. The Silver House.
Silver House, at, at the boulevard, I think 147, the boulevard.
That, that house is still sitting there without any kind of decision as to what we're going to do with it. And there is some questions also on the CPC board as to whether, what can be done with it. And we would like to, CPC would like to take the.
Please step down.
Take the matter in front of town council, have a review, the original grant that the house, that the money was given to, for the funding of Silver House and determine whether we can, what, what we can do with the property, whether we can use it for affordable housing or if it has to stay as housing for what it's being, what was it?
Yeah, so temporary housing, I think technically.
Yeah. So I just, I like, I told the CPC board that I would bring it in front of this board and request that we have council review the, the documents and.
It's a really good idea.
Okay, then we can finally figure out what we're doing with this property because it's sort of sitting in limbo here.
And I think, Libby, we sort of, we're going to bring that back up after town meeting.
Yeah, this has already been done, this review, and it's on my desk.
Oh, it is? Okay. Because we, we weren't sure if it had been done.
You're self efficient, Libby.
I'm a little bit tied up with.
Okay.
But it's, it's been a topic, but it hasn't gone away, so just hopefully we're going to get it done.
Our next CPC meeting is April 17th, so hopefully between now and then we can get on our agenda and I can report back to CPC what the status is. There is still $50,000 in question of money that was appropriated to them, but has not been spent, and we're having a difficult time getting them to release the money back to CPC.
And there are children's?
Uh, yes. And there are a lot of entities that, as I said at the meeting, and this is like having a pack of wild dogs and throwing a bone on the floor in front of them because everybody wants this property all of a sudden, so we, we need to get it squared away so we can move on.
You may end up with an RFP and take proposals and see.
Should be quick if it's on the deck. Libby says.
And whether or not the 50, could it go for the septic or not to help?
Right, right. There is issues with the septic. The septic system there, as you all probably know, is not sufficient for both buildings, and the lot is small enough that it would need a Title V system. So, you know, we have to figure that all out. And then I had, if you don't.
Yeah, go right ahead.
I had a question for Kara as to what the status was of the pumps at Children's Beach. Are they, are they working?
This is Mr. Coffey.
Are there variable speeds motors on there now?
The variable speed drives were installed a couple months ago, and we've had one storm event, and you'll notice we didn't have any flooding. So they do appear to be working as designed, so, variable frequency drives.
Good. I just figured with the rainy season of spring coming up, it will be interesting to see what happens.
Yeah, checking it out.
And do you think there's going to be an impact? Because the other issue related to that was the outflow into that corner of the yacht club and.
That seems to have resolved itself.
Has that sort of resolved itself, really?
Yeah, one, the, the flow, when it was initially installed, did have a discoloration issue, but the longer it flowed, it, it seemed to filter itself out.
Maybe it cleared out whatever that was. That's good to hear.
Pete Kaiser's calling you about that now, right?
Yeah. I, I, I get, I get, I get the little every now and then.
Bobby, any other reports?
That's it for me, thank you.
Okay. Other committee reports, members? Whitey?
First, I want to know, how many of the board know what Tri-Works means?
Tri-Works is where they melt down the blubber.
Yeah, on the, on the whaling vessels. We all know that.
Anyway, SHAB met, and they've got a couple of interesting ideas. They're looking at using scallop shells for putting back into the harbor for a multitude of reasons. One, increase the, attack the acidity, and also as substrate, the young spat will attach to scallops. And so we're, we're looking into the feasibility of that. We're also looking into relocating some of the seed. We have had a very good year, and there's a lot of seed out there, and we suspect it was, it's part of the propagation that was carried out by Tara Riley. And so that's good news. But now the question is, where do we take it from and where do we put it to? And so that's being discussed, and then who will do it and how we will motivate them to do it. And there's over 17,000 bushels have been harvested and people are still fishing.
A lot of what Whitey just said will be addressed in the shellfish management plan, but there, we, I've had a couple of discussions with the guys that are writing it, and they, they're on the right track with it, so.
So maybe we get them in here to bring us up to date at some point when the plan.
I think when the final plan's ready, we'll probably get some type of report, or a SHAB will, and then SHAB will bring it to us, I don't know.
Yeah, that's, that's the plan.
That would be great. Other committee reports, anybody, members? We're all set. Is there a motion to adjourn?
The subject of the audit committee, I'm presum, I'm assuming that, as you know, I've, I've had to absent myself from.
Well. Well, the last committee was a couple of weeks ago, but the, at that time, we, it was reported that the audit itself was 99.9% done, and they were word smoothing some odds and ends, and we didn't have the signed report. However, Libby, at the moment, we do have copies which have been delivered to the audit committee and the board members, and Powers and Sullivan has signed the report, and we have a certified opinion of the auditors that's unqualified. So, that's the good news.
Oh, great.
And we, you know, I've, I've been serving on the audit committee this year. I'm going to be gone in, in three weeks or so. I don't know if the board is interested in having someone else take that spot now or after the 11th, when the, the election...
We could do it now. You could stay, I, I'm not sure we're going to have a meeting until after then, anyway. The report's in hand, so, but Whitey?
Yeah, you should wait until you have a new board before you start...
What, what is, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, or Whitey, go ahead.
Well, that's all right.
No, go ahead.
No, I just said we ought to wait until we get a new board, because they have to participate.
We may not have a meeting anyway.
What, I was curious what the status is on the forensic audit at the airport.
The forensic audit, the folks charged with sort of monitoring that were Mr. Copco, Mr. Mulcahy, and myself. The last meeting we had with the forensic auditor was probably, Libby, I'm going to guess, three and a half, four weeks ago now. There have been, at that time, I think he felt, what's the right phrase? That he had explored enough work evidence, looking at the paperwork, so that he was prepared to move forward with a report that I think was going to feel that we haven't found anything other than accounting-type things that were out of line. Since then, the finance committee asked that the forensic audit be expanded to review specifically some of the issues related to the airport and accounting issues between the airport and the town accounting department, I think, in essence. And I do believe they have met as a subcommittee, is that correct, with the forensic auditor, and he has accepted that expansion of his assignment?
I'm not sure if he's accepted it. He's discussed it.
Okay.
And I think would like to see what our financial consultant comes up with first, who is also working on an airport report. Plus, I think the most recent discussion I had with the forensic auditor, which was maybe a week ago or so, there was a desire to wait until the Attorney General's report had been able to be reviewed, which we have not seen yet, to make sure that there wasn't anything alarming in that report that wasn't in ours, vice versa.
We had that discussion as I...
So, there's a little chicken and egg here, so I think we got to go back.
Moving along, but we're not there yet.
It is, but it, I think there is a little bit of an issue about how much time to expand into those other areas that maybe not be totally clear until we hear some more about that.
Correct, but I, yeah, yeah, that's, that's it.
Okay.